Whereas this council desires to recognize Megan Hale for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Megan Hale, December 2020, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Great, thank you. Yeah, well hey, let's hear it from Megan. And this is a resolution, why don't we adopt it real fast? Do we have a motion? Got a motion in a second? Cast your votes as soon as you're able. I'm gonna guess the first vote's always a little slow. All right, passes unanimously, as expected, Megan. Thank you so much for your service. You are obviously a great example of the finest city staff in the country. Any thoughts that you'd like to share this morning?
I just want to thank everyone for having me here today and allowing me to work for the city. It's truly an honor and to work with a lot of amazing people and serve the citizens. It's been great, thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, Mayor. You go ahead. So I appreciate Megan's service for the city, and I know she's one that really is an example of so many of our employees that wants to sit in the background and isn't looking to get recognition or be noticed, but does great work for us every single day. So really appreciate her work, but also just what it represents for all of our employees.
Absolutely. Okay, well, thank you, Megan. Let's hear it from Megan and all our city employees one more time. All right, that concludes Office of the Mayor, which brings us to Item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. We can take Items A and B with one motion. Is there a second? Got a second. Motion in a second. Cast your votes as soon as you have the opportunity. Item 5, Request for Uncontested Continuances. We have Item 9A2 that is already listed here as being continued to January 5th. Mr. City Manager, are there any other items?
Yes, sir, there are. We have several. We've got on Page 6, Item 7AE. This is an item to amend the contract with the City County Health Department for the COVID relief. This is on testing, tracing vaccinations. We were actually having to make quite a few adjustments to this, moving it into city funds from the CARES funds. Because of the recent activities and the expected approval of the extension, we want to strike this item because it's such a significant change. We're gonna strike this item, we'll bring it back with an amendment at a later date.
And just to reference that, in case people haven't followed the news, we look like we're going, that the President will sign an extension of a year on our spending of these dollars.
Right, right, that's right. And so we're with that expectation. The CARES funds give us more flexibility than if we're directly using city funds. And so we really, we talked with City County Health and decided it'd be better to go ahead and strike this. If something happened and it didn't get signed, we would come back at the next meeting, get this amendment on, and take care of that. So we all agree that really, this was such a significant change in our agreement, it was better to leave the current agreement in place until the end of the year with the expectation that CARES funds will give us that extension.
Okay.
On Page 10, Item 9J1, under unsecured structures. Item D, we'll strike all of these items. Item D is 2001 North Page Avenue. The owner has secured. Item E, 4400 Southwestern Avenue, to re-notify for additional structures. Item I, 5020 Northwest 27th Street, the owner has secured. And then Item J, 25 Southeast 28th Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on Page 10, under 9K1, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 4400 Southwestern Avenue, to re-notify for additional structures. Item H, 5020 Northwest 27th Street, the owner has secured. On Page 11, Item 9M. This is a resolution that we're looking at to move forward with the demolition of the Old City Jail. The developer who had, was looking at what they could do to possibly bring forward a proposal to develop is also, last time they weren't able to be here, they're not able to be here this week. We are moving this to the 5th and have told them, we're making sure that we're moving forward on the 5th, so it's a deferral for two weeks. And that is all the items I have.
Okay. Item 6 is revocable permits. There are no items there listed, so we'll recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we do have a presentation on Item D, correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So Item D is the acceptance of the financial statements from the MFA. And we have several items on today, acceptance of our financial statements, including the city's comprehensive annual financial report that these all report into. I've asked Brent Bryant, our Finance Director, to give us a presentation. He's gonna go ahead and present on all of them. There'll be one for the MFA, the PPA, Environmental Assistance Trust, and then the city's comprehensive annual financial report. So I'll let Brent take that and give us a presentation.
Good morning, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. As the City Manager said, we have four financial reports for the fiscal ending June 30, 2020. I'll refer to them as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities, Item D, which we're discussing right now, the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, which is Item B on their agenda, also on Page 2, the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, Item A, also on Agenda Page 2, and then Item 7AI, on Page 6 of the Consent Docket, is where you'll find the CAFER, as we often call it. I first want to recognize our outstanding accounting staff, who is led by Angela Pierce, who is serving this fiscal year as both our Assistant Finance Director and Controller. And also want to recognize Alex Fedak, who's here today with us. Normally, we'd have all the accounting staff here, but for obvious reasons, we don't today. But they worked diligently this year and did a great job. Alex serving as our interim controller right now while Angela's out on maternity leave. I also want to thank all of our departments and our external auditor AGH for all their work in doing this in a very unprecedented time. So before we get started, I just want to talk about one particular definition that you'll hear is net position. And net position is periodically, you're gonna see that throughout these reports, which is nothing more than all your assets, your cash and your capital or your equipment, less liabilities or any obligations, so whatever those are. So that's, and that's how you basically evaluate an organization. So we'll go to the first place with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. It provides services for basic city operations with its primary function for health insurance and workers' comp. Other services include, we also take care of our property and liability insurance, our nuisance abatements, our IT contracting, and advanced funding for our GO bond projects. Regarding the advanced funding, what we do there is the MFA will pre-fund A and E services, then when bond, that gets us a start on our general obligation bond projects, and then once the bonds are issued and we receive the bond proceeds, we will reimburse the MFA in its revolving account. And this supports the deployment of timely GO bonds. In FY '20, the net position increased 5.4 million to a total of 42.1 million. The OCPPA provides services on behalf of the city, support the city's five golf courses, fairgrounds, and various building contracts, including the Chesapeake Arena, the new MAPS 3 Convention Center, and other city buildings. It is also used to support our five business improvement districts. In FY '20, the net position decreased 3.4 million to 59.3 million due to the reduction in public event charges and the depreciation of fairgrounds assets. The golf's negative position improved 1.7 million to negative 3.2 million position. As a result of the closures in March and April, I will tell you that the golf courses rebounded very well and ended the year on a really good note. The Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust provides the resources for the operation, collection, and disposal of solid waste, and as we all know, they're very busy right now. The trust saw a $10.5 million increase over the last year, primarily just increased cash and investments. Just as a reminder, I want to remind you, on October 28, this council authorized OcW and the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust to begin the process of merging those trusts, so you'll see more information. So next year, it'll look a little different. The final report is located on Page 6 of your agenda, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFER. We ended the year with a net position of $2.4 billion compared to last year's $2.3. The component units, which is an accounting term for the trust, finished with a net position of $1.7 billion. And many of the increases contributed to bond sales and the CARES Act funding that we did receive. Our three pension funds ended the year on a positive note with a $13 million increase in net position. The majority of the increase came from the Oklahoma City Employee Retirement System, also known as OKERS, as it ended with a net asset pension of 101.4% funded. I will tell you, there's a little lag time in that. That's as of, just due to the timing, that's as of December 31 of 18, that was reflected in the June 30. We already know that that's a good thing, being over 100% funded, but we also know that as of December 31 of 2019, it's a little bit less than that, a little under 100%, but it's still very good. Our other post-employment benefit trusts made progress as its funded liability increased from 12.1% to 13.2%. We ended the year on a good note when it comes to fund balance. This is one key area that our rating agencies look at every year. They monitor fund balance probably closer than we do to a certain extent. So all governmental funds totaled $1.2 billion, which was a decrease of 29.7 million. This is due to the spin-down on the MAPS 3 funds. For the General Fund, on a budgetary or cash basis, the General Fund ended June 30 at $106.7 million, which is an increase from the 2019 amount. This is primarily due to the employee vacancies as a result of our mid-year hiring freeze. We normally would provide you the single audit, which is the audit of our federal and state programs, however, that has been extended due to the federal government providing us guidelines to our external auditors on how to audit the CARES Act funds. So we're going to, that will be delayed probably till March, end of March of next year. The bottom line for this year is we have no material findings in our audits. For the fourth consecutive year, and at this time, we are not having any material findings with our single audit. We are considered, we started the year out and we're ending the year out, as considered as a low-risk auditee, which helps with our auditing costs. In closing, despite the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic on our state, local economy, and even our world, the Oklahoma City finished the year on stronger than the prior year. This is a testament to council's goal of a strong financial management, and it's the policies that you've put in place, that you've held us to, that we've continued over the years, and it's really helped us through this time. And on behalf of the entire Finance Department, we just want to thank you for that. So with that, Alex and I are here to answer any detailed questions that you might have.
Brent, with regards to to the pension fund?
Yes, sir.
How we are either... Does that take into account our share of the state's unfunded pension balance?
The 100% only considers the city employees' pension system. And I'll tell you that the Police Department pension, which is a state program which we contribute to, is doing well, and I know that the Fire Pension, which I serve on, for the Fire Pension, had an uptick this last year. They're in the 60% to 70% range, where the Police, I believe the Police is closer to 100%.
Okay, but that unfunded position of the state still impacts our financial statements in some manner, doesn't it?
It does. It gets passed through our financial statements on a GAAP basis. So when we see, it's our portion of that unfunded liability, it's like representing our portion of the members that are in the pension system, that portion of the unfunded liability gets passed into our financial statements.
But Brent, you think the state's making improvements towards addressing that unfunded position?
I would say they're making very slight incremental improvements.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was the only presentation under the Municipal Facilities Authority, so we could take Items A through E with one motion if we like. Got a motion, is there a second? All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through C. I would note, just due to structural reasons, normally my appointments are at Office of the Mayor, but Golf Commission appointments always appear under PPA, and there are some here as well. So, but we can take Items A through C with one motion. Got a motion in a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have Items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the City Council, where we find ourselves on Page 2 of your printed agenda. This is Item 7, the Consent Docket. There are scheduled presentations on Items S as in SAM, Item AD, Item AF, Item AG, and Item AJ. Are there any other items that a council member wishes to pull out for separate discussion or a separate vote?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to talk about Item V, as in Victor, number 2.
Okay, got it.
Mayor, if I could just talk briefly about Item O1?
What is that, I'm sorry?
O1?
O1.
O as in Oscar?
Got it. Okay.
Well, since we're talking about O, I might as well take 2 and 3.
Okay.
O.
All right. Well, we'll take them all in order then, which means we will start there with O1 through 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the Boys and Girls Club of Oklahoma County. They provide a lot of out-of-school programming there at Adelaide Lee Elementary, as well as Capitol Hill Middle School, and this is the funding that can allow that to continue. I've been down there and watched what they do. They do a fantastic job with our kids in that area, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I want to echo those sentiments, and we actually have hours at Martin Luther King Elementary School, FT Moon Middle School, as well as Thelma Parks Elementary. And I know with the After-School Network, last summer, when we remember, if we can remember that far back, we had some young people come, they took the bus, and they actually came, and they were in our council chambers, and those young people sat in these seats that we're sitting in to experience local government. So we gave them all titles. We even had a couple that were the mayor, and they took that and carried that with them. So it's those types of experiences that we're able to offer as far as our city, from a city aspect, that pours back into the lives of our young people. And I think that's, it's excellent that we are able to pour back into our young people in that way. So I'm excited to see what will come for this year. I know we have to be more creative in a lot of aspects, but I'm more excited than ever to be a part of I Know What's To Come for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Item S, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, this is a contract that is for the Public Works Department on the debris removal, the storm debris removal that's along the Wrights of Way, public parks, things like that. Ask Chris to be here and speak to that, and then Chris Browning is also with us, with Utilities Director. I just thought it'd be a good opportunity to speak about both what we're doing on the removal of debris from Wrights of Way and parks and public lands, as well as how we're doing with the residential debris removal program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. The item that you had before you today on Item S is adding a second contractor that's going to assist the public works crews in removing the debris specifically from the arterial city streets. They'll also assist in some of the other neighborhood removals that are not part of the utilities removal. It'll include churches, public schools, I think we've discussed that before. The public works removals have gone very well. We have had a single contractor that's provided as many as 14 crews since beginning just after Thanksgiving. They've removed between 30% and 40% of the debris that's in the current arterial street system, so making tremendous progress citywide. But with the second contractor and the council's approval today, that'll allow us to accelerate that somewhat and ensure that we're gonna hit those goals of finishing the debris removals by late January, early February of next year. We continue to work very closely with the Utilities Department. It is a concerted effort. They have a significant increase in number of crews that are assisting with their debris removals. I see that Chris is here, so I'll pardon myself to let him give the update on Utilities. But if there's any questions on Item S, again, it adds a second contractor, and it just helps us accelerate the debris pickups from the October ice storm.
All right. Well, that brings us to 7V2. Oh, Chris, oh, sorry. Sure, go ahead.
Good morning, Chris Browning, Utilities Director. All right, I just wanted to give everybody a quick update on the debris collection effort that we're working on right now. As you can see from the map, we started in the middle of the city where the concentration was the highest, around Western and 23rd, and we've been working our way outward in all four directions, but primarily in the western corridor. We have completed 67 grids, totally cleaned out 67 grids of the highest concentrated debris in the city. We've collected about 35,000 tons to date. We got a little bit of a slow start. We started the week before Thanksgiving where the contractor ramped up, and then we had the Thanksgiving week, and since then, we've been fairly productive. One day last week, as a matter of fact, had 85 trucks running at one time. So we have quite a few, quite a few collection crews out there working. We had some challenges to begin with, in that there were a couple of hurricanes that resources were still cleaning in the Gulf region, and then, of course, we had all the cities in central Oklahoma impacted. So the number of crews available to collect the debris were fairly limited when we first started, but those crews are starting to come into Oklahoma City, and the production rate has gone up exponentially over the last couple of weeks. So we still believe we're on schedule to be finished with the first pass by the end of January. Now, in some areas, when we did our estimate, we kind of underestimated the amount of debris because we couldn't see in the backyards. We could just see what was in the front yards and piled at the curb. So in some areas, the amount of debris was actually much higher than we anticipated, but we're still making good progress with 35,000 tons collected to date. The crews will obviously take off the end of this week and the end of next week, so we're not sure what the production is gonna be this week and next week, but then they'll ramp right back up after the first of the year. And we still believe we'll be on schedule to complete the first pass the end of January, and then the second pass through the end of February, early March. And I would be happy to, well, one other thing, we've had about 220 inquiries, people wanting us to come and collect their debris for various reasons, and we've taken the position that we have a schedule, and if we start jumping all over the city trying to collect this and that neighborhood and other neighborhoods for good reason, but if we start moving crews around, the production rate will go down significantly. So we've been on task, and we've been answering the folks accordingly to kind of give them an understanding of where we're working and how long it might take us to get to their neighborhood. And this map is updated daily, so they can go on okc.gov and see this map, so they know where we've been and where we're working, so they get an understanding of kind of where they are in the schedule. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have one, if you don't mind, and thank you for this, because this, I've been paying attention to this map, so it's helped me when I get a lot of inquiries myself, and they finally came and picked up ours, too, so we are very thankful for that in our neighborhood. But I know you said about the end of, I guess, February, so can we, do we have a date that we can probably tell our residents that missed the first pass as far as picking up that debris, maybe because they couldn't get anyone to cut their trees down, that we can tell them to expect and get them out by a certain time for 2021?
Yes, ma'am. We should be starting the second pass around the first of February, and we expect to be completed by, I think it's the first week in March. Yes, sir?
As opposed to just destroying them as they currently lay? Are you...
So they're all going to the landfill. We've had a couple of contractors ask us, can we burn them? And, you know, 100,000 tons burning in Oklahoma City is not a good idea, so we said, no. We're taking them to the landfill. So one landfill, I know, I've seen the video, they have the giant grinder, and they're grinding them up, and they'll use it for erosion control at the landfill.
I see.
Now, some folks said, well, why don't you mulch it and give out the mulch? That's not a good idea, because some of these trees are diseased, and we don't want to spread the disease throughout the whole city, so we don't do that.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to 7V2. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I understand we had some residential sidewalk and pavement repairs and transit sidewalks for Wards 3, 6, and 7, and I know particularly Ward 7, Northeast 36, from Lottie to Lincoln. And I guess my question is, I guess, a twofold question. Did we just do the sidewalks, or was it also pavement repairs?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. On this item, on Item V2, Northeast 36, Lincoln to Lottie, there was lots of sidewalks that were upgraded. One of the things that you'll find in the memo is there's about 2.8 miles of sidewalk that were either upgraded or built new, so that was the primary portion of the project. And there were some areas that included some limited pavement repairs, but it wasn't a resurfacing contract. So this was not predominantly one where we were resurfacing miles and miles of street, it was more sidewalk and sidewalk enhancements.
Okay, well, that's great. I'm glad you answered that, because now my concern is a particular area that sits on Northeast 36th Street, right in front of the Northeast Shopping Center, which I have had to call on numerous times, and I tried to take a picture of it last night, but it's not safe to do that while you're driving and going into that same place at the same time. But this particular area continues to gather water, and it continues to erode in some aspects. So I'm having some real big concerns with us being able to go, move forward with that when we have this type of issue in just one particular main part of where I know we have to continuously repair that particular space.
But we, we're doing our best to try to keep up with those small areas of need of repair. Obviously, right now, when we look at the Better Street Saver City Program and the street resurfacing, we are looking at those longer miles, but we are still doing some of those limited street repairs where we have isolated issues. With your information today, I mean, I'm happy to look further into this further on 36th Street in front of the shopping center, and if there's some need of pavement repair there, that is something that we could accomplish even after the acceptance of this project. I mean, those would be ongoing items that we can look further into. I just need a little more time to research that.
Well, I'll make sure I get some more pictures, so you can, we can reference those as well in that area.
I'll have you address that. With your concern shared, we've got inspectors that are also in the field. I would say that they were looking at some of the work that was completed, so they were looking at the completed work to see if there were deficiencies, but we'll make sure that if there's a new item, we'll absolutely get that addressed as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you. That brings us to Item 7AD. This is a professional services agreement with 21 CP Solutions to conduct a law enforcement study. This is in support of the work of the Law Enforcement Task Force, and I believe we have a presentation on that.
Yes, so Assistant City Manager Kenny Sudle has helped to lead the way on making the selection on this consultant, but this is working with both our Law Enforcement Policy Task Force and our Community Policing Working Group that was formed by the council resolution. The task force was established by the mayor. MT Berry was hired as our facilitator for the task force, he's also here. He's also here, and will say a few words, but just Kenny's going to give us an update on the process, the selection, and what the goals are now, because this is really where this project starts really moving forward with digging into some of these issues and looking at opportunities for improvement. Kenny?
Yeah, good morning. Kenny Sudle, Assistant City Manager. Just a brief overview, kind of where we're at. As Craig mentioned, the task force was created back in, I believe, July, August, the city manager's working group was formed. You know, we began working on RFP for consulting services to address the two issues that we're to deal with out of the mayor's task force and the six issues that we're to deal with out of the community working group. So just as kind of overview on the process and where we've been, back in September, September 3rd, we had a working session with the mayor's task force to look at the scope of services that would go into this request for proposals. We also, on September 10th, had a working session with the city manager's working group where, you know, the members reviewed the scope of services, gave suggestions. And then, if you'll recall, back on September the 15th, the RFP was approved by the city council and issued. Proposals were due back on October the 7th. We had four proposers that submitted for these services, and we had an RFP committee that was formed that contained members from both the working group and the task force. So we had 12 members. There were three city folks on that group. There was myself, Deputy Chief Paco Baldorama, and Amy Simpson, our purchasing agent, to fulfill our city policies on, when we go through these procurement processes. And then we had nine members of the community, Joanne Davis, Grace Franklin, Reggie Hines, Ed Conyevsky, John Midendorf, Dexter Nelson, Paula Sophia Shonour, and Tim Tartabono and Dr. Valerie Thompson were the members of our RFP selection committee. So we reviewed the proposals. We had several meetings to discuss them, narrowed it down to some finalists. The two finalists, we, in early December, had presentations from them, questions that were submitted to them, and prior from the RFP committee, and then also just hit them with questions, you know, during the presentations. And then after a lot of debate and review, the recommendation was made to move forward with 21 CP Solutions. And at this time, I'd like to stop for just a minute, and M.T. wanted to make a few comments and just talk a little bit about some of the discussion and things that we had related to this recommendation in the task force meetings. M.T.
Thank you, Kenny, and a good morning, mayor and council. Glad to be here. Arriving at this point of recommending a consultant to you culminates a lot of work by the RFP committee and the city staff. Just to give you an idea of the timeline on this, the task force was asked to give input on the scope of services for the RFP at our second meeting, which was held in September of, September the 3rd, at our monthly task force meeting. That, by the way, was our second task force meeting. The recommendation to select 21 CP came back to the task force on December the 10th, as Kenny states. Now, in less than three months, the RFP was created and advertised, four proposals were received and evaluated by the RFP committee, two finalists were selected and interviewed, and a unanimous recommendation to the task force was made by the RFP committee. Now, if you're familiar with the RFP process, that is a very short timeline to complete such a process, and I would like to thank each member of the RFP committee and city staff for their hard work on this project. During our last meeting, during the last meeting of the Law Enforcement Policy Task Force, the RFP committee members discussed at length their points of view regarding the two finalists, which prompted some robust discussion between them and other task force members. In order to address those issues that the RFP committee had and issues that the task force had, the RFP committee recommended that the establishment of an oversight committee be implemented to oversee the work of the consultant, to oversee the performance of the consultant, and to oversee the evaluation of the consultant. The task force agreed with that. So the RFP committee was unanimous in their support of the recommendations to employ 21 CP, and the task force approved moving forward with that recommendation and forwarding it to you for your consideration today. Thank you.
So I also want to thank M.T. I also want to just kind of give an overview on the, what's in the contract itself. So one thing is-
Before you do that, Ken-
Yes, sir.
One point, and I'm not clear on this, the RFP recommended an oversight committee. Has that oversight committee been appointed? Who appointed it or who will appoint it? How many members will be on it, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, let me, so one of the, one of the things, there was, there was several things that were brought up at the task force meeting and in the RFP committee that we wanted to ensure, that we made sure this, that 21 CP stays on task and performs correctly. One of the RFP committee members, Joanne Davis, came up with a great idea that, hey, what if we formed from the RFP committee members, some of us who have been there, read all the 200-plus pages of proposals, been through all the presentations, they suggested that they might be a good body to draw some members from to serve as an oversight committee. And while that's not a formal committee, it's really volunteers from the RFP committee, and I can share with you who's volunteered to date. Dexter Nelson, Ed Conyevsky, Grace Franklin, Joanne Davis, John Midendorf, Reggie Hines, Tim Tartabono, and Valerie Thompson have all volunteered to be basically a committee that would work alongside of myself and the city manager. And as we talk about the contract, there's a few things in the contract that we've put in. One is if they want to change any members who they propose, and there's a list of members in the contract who will, from 21 CP, if they want to change any of those, they have to get our permission. And that, it would be intended that the oversight or review committee would be alongside Craig and I, making those recommendations. If we feel like somebody's not performing, or they're not working well with our community or our staff, that committee would help with that. If we're looking at timelines or scope changes, that committee would help us with that. And they're sort of helping us to be the pulse of the community that maybe, you know, I personally wouldn't have the differing viewpoints or things from around the community. They would be folks that would come alongside us and just help ensure that they're being effective as they implement this. And, you know, it's not, as I said, councilman, it's not really a formalized process. It was something that the review committee asked, and Craig and I were open to and thought it was a great idea to just have someone that kind of helps us along as we're going through this process to ensure that, we may think the process is going well, but they're there to also ensure that the community thinks the process is going well. So the contract itself is for not to exceed $193,130. And I'm happy to report, we also received a grant from the In As Much Foundation for $175,000. So that's going to cover the bulk of these services. And, you know, 21 CP, one of the reasons that they were chosen, if some of you may recall, back in 2015, President Obama formed a task force on 21st Century Policing, and several of the members of 21 CP were on that original task force by President Obama. In fact, one of the co-chairs is Charles Ramsey, who's one of the folks who'll be working on our project. There are several other members who were, who staffed that committee as well, and they, along with a lot of other professionals, formed this company back in 2015. Now, they have experience in policing, you know, there are ex-police chiefs and police folks there, but they also have folks who have experience with social science, academic experience, civil rights experience, community engagement experience. They have a list of folks that are listed in our, in your packet in our contract who will be assigned to our project, but they have a whole bunch of other folks who are available, you know, if there's something else that comes up during the project that we need some additional expertise on. They've worked with a variety of cities and states. Some of those, just very quickly, are like Baltimore, Bridgeport, California, Sacramento, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Grand Rapids, Minnesota, Raleigh, South Bend, Tacoma, Seattle, Vermont, and they've worked with Yale University reviewing their police force there. So the last thing I'll just say is, if you look in the contract, there's also a timeline and some phases. So it's phase one is really what we're kind of calling project launch and the initial engagement. That's where we're really working with the task force, the working group, the oversight group, and all the community members. That's when the community engagement really starts. They'll be reaching out and going, who all do we need to talk to in the community? Who all do we need to reach out to? And that's where they begin setting these meetings and reviewing best practices, looking at current practices that we're doing in our police department, and reaching out to the community. The second phase is where they will come back with kind of a broader community survey so that while we're, we would be in the first phase targeting to talk with certain segments of the community, we would also want to do a broader survey to make sure, you know, once we kind of get a feeling for what concerns and things are out there, how does the city as a whole feel? And you might imagine that's something kind of like we do our annual resident survey, something similar to that, but, but in relation to some of these policing issues. We'll analyze results, do preliminary findings and recommendations in that phase two. And then phase three is really reviewing those recommendations with all the stakeholders, looking at the budgetary process, the budgetary implications, the cost-benefit analysis, those types of things, and really coming up with an implementation plan and timeline for implementation. And then phase four would be where we report that out. That's where the presentations would come to the task force, the working group, to you all, to any other, you know, community organizations that we needed to present that to. So that's a very broad overview of the contract. You know, it's obviously a work in progress, and that's, we're planning on getting started. You know, with approval today, we would get started just as soon as the new year begins after these holidays, and, you know, this is where the real work starts, as Craig said. This is where we really begin moving this process forward. So with that, be happy to take any questions.
Still unclear as far as phase three is concerned. Can you give me kind of a timeline when you think that'll be done by?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't either. I'm having trouble hearing. Phase three, you mentioned phase three. What's your timeline? When do you think, what's an approximate date that that will be completed by?
Let me get this, let me get my timeline out here. And there's a timeline attached. It's in Attachment B in the contract. So the thought is, you know, it's going to take a couple of months here to do the initial engagement. Once they get on the ground, they're talking to all of us, figuring out who they need to be talking to. They're really looking at, it's probably going to be, have preliminary recommendations ready sometime around July, and then that phase three begins in August and September. That's where we're really working through that budgeting process. So, you know, that is one issue that we know some of these may end up having budget implications, and that's something that, you know, unfortunately, we'd love to have that information now, just the timing's not going to work on that. But, you know, these are things that we can always take and look at through either a budget amendment process, if that's possible, we can look at it through the next year's budget, but these are, these are things, I don't know, Craig, if you want to talk about that anymore either, but just the timing doesn't line up real well with our budget, but I think we're working on some possibilities to try to make sure we address any of those issues.
And that's something, too, that we'll work with the consultants, that if there's opportunities where there's parts of this that we could look at earlier, especially where there might be budget implications. We've talked about the fact that many of the recommendations that will come back, you know, you won't be able to implement them all in one year, all at the same time. You'll want to try to target those highest priority, the ones that make the most difference first. So we're going to try to take all of that into consideration, and we're working with them and get an anticipation for that. We'll try to make sure that we have the ability to be able to respond to address some of those issues that could have budgetary implications.
One thing I'd like to see if I could is the contract that has the timeline. And I guess the second thing, what you're telling me is, there's a chance we'll have no out-of-pocket expense on this thanks to the In As Much Foundation, right?
Yeah. It'll be minimal, yeah.
We want to thank the In As Much Foundation very, very much for their support and help.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. Speaking to that question or that comment that was just made, so there's still costs that we will have to expand. So where is that going to come from?
It's coming out of the general fund.
Okay. Is it a possibility for that to come from the public safety sales tax?
Um, I couldn't understand.
I'll have to look at that. I know the public safety sales tax has implications to it as to, it's got a, yes, sir.
I just asked if it could come from the public safety sales tax.
Right. There's a general entry of judgment that dictates how we can establish by resolution of the council a new project, and it's got to be, you know, include newer improved services, police services. So I'll just need to evaluate with legal if that's something that we could consider on that portion of it.
Okay. And my second question, as I, and I was a part of the meeting that we had for the Law Enforcement Task Force, and I was, I was very quiet because I wanted to hear and listen and understand what the conversation was when it came to the RFP committee, their concerns, their asks, their requests, and also the ask of the implementation of this advisory oversight committee. My, my concern, looking at this and understanding how close the vote was, with, when you have a RFP committee, I guess my concern is really our city staff being engaged in that vote. And I, I don't want to say we have to be, we always want to be unbiased in those conversations and in those votes. However, because of the information I've been privy to and I've heard in regards to the RFP committee and their thoughts, I have, I have a deep concern about us being involved in voting on that instead of just giving oversight or addressing their concerns as far as the folks who were particularly voting in reference to this RFP process. And I don't know how you can answer or speak to that.
Well, I would say a couple of things. One, the committee was nine members of the community and three city employees. And the three city employees, that's really to comply with our policies. Our purchasing policies require that we have to have a city manager appointee, a departmental appointee, and-
And then finance director.
Finance appointee. So that's really where I was the city manager appointee, Paco Baldorama was the departmental appointee, and Amy Simpson, the purchasing agent, was the finance. And that's per city policy that's set and approved by the council. I do want to say, you know, we had two really good finalists. You know, I don't, I don't know that we would have gone wrong with either one of them. Great, great reputable firms. And while the committee had a lot of robust discussion, I think that was something we really brought forward was, hey, I, we can't move forward if the RFP committee as a whole cannot support this choice. And we had a lot of discussions. So it's my firm belief that, you know, it's supported by the RFP committee members, and, you know, ultimately, it was supported by the task force and the working group as well. So, I mean, I feel very good about it, and I feel very good that they're already being responsive. You know, I'll tell you, I believe that the 21 CP, before we even had a contract, if you look at, and this is all in the packet that's, you know, public knowledge, if you look at who the team members were when they submitted their RFP, and some concerns were raised by the RFP members, they've already added two additional team members that are in the contract and have to be on our contract to address some of those concerns that have some of the areas of expertise and community engagement background. They've already added Ganisha Martin and, I believe his name is Ray Kelly, were two of the folks, and their bios are included in Attachment C, I believe it is. So, you know, I feel like that's already working, and we don't even have a contract that, you know, there's already been an influence made by that oversight committee.
Do we have that attachment?
It should be, I don't know if you have the full packet or not.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We have a couple citizens who signed up to speak on this item. Okay, we'll move to that then. Emily Blunt. And Emily, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes.
to three minutes.
My name's Emily Blunt. I have to say my address? Is that what you said?
Just for the record, yeah.
Twenty-one twenty-one Cashin Place. So, not exactly, this is my first city council meeting, so you'll have to forgive me if I'm speaking out of any kind of passion that brought me here. So I was really disappointed to see on the city council agenda more money for the Oklahoma City Police Department, so that's generally why I'm here. The, honestly, just doing some brief research. So, there was a long meeting where I guess several citizens asked that the police budget not be approved. There are only three of you that voted no, and six of you voted yes. One of the council people even went as far as to say is, at the end of the day, we should all lay down and thank God that we live in Oklahoma City because of our police department. And I just want to ask, why? Why would we be thankful? This city is number two in police killings per capita. What do we have to be grateful for when we lay down at night and we think about this? So when I was researching to come here, the first thing I noticed about the agenda was how unwelcome I felt attempting to speak. There are multiple reasons listed as to how a person can get arrested for speaking in this public meeting about topics that impact our lives, most subjective to individual choice. The second thing I researched was which ward I live in, and with a great amount of anxiety, I looked to see who my councilperson was. I was relieved to find my councilperson is James Cooper. I saw a proposal he had made for police reform and mental health services, expanding programs like FACT for gang prevention and homeless outreach teams. Changing our police system is important. Oklahoma City deserves to not be fearful when mention of police is made. I deserve, and my fellow activists deserve, to not fear for our lives for fighting for an end to police brutality. As I write this, I'm not exactly sure what to speak about to be on the topic for the agenda items. I see something on the agenda, $100,000 for covert technology for police. I'd ask that any additional funding granted in relation to police be used to investigate the Oklahoma City Police Department and find out why. Why are they number two in killing citizens per capita? Find out why the Oklahoma City Police Department is so underpaid and yet they walk around crime scenes where one of their own is the killer, smiling, playing on their phones, joking with buddies, sporting Ray Bans and Oakleys. There are always so many of them when a black or brown person is involved. If they need money, why don't they start by not escalating into deadly situations by sending more officers than necessary? Our bloodthirsty police are nothing new. The new part is a peaceful group coming together in the name of making the violence stop. Stop giving money in protection to our killers. Provide resources to the community that will put a stop to the desperation of being 15 and trying to rob a convenience store. Leading five, leading five out of six officers to use lethal force despite the weapon on the ground. When I think of the excuse of being scared, or thinking it was the officer's life, or Stavion Rodriguez, or Benny Edwards, or Isaiah Lewis, or Derek Scott, I can't help but think of what the world would look like if we took the preventative measures to not create the scenarios that led each of them to police interactions. What if instead of nurturing and protecting a police culture so focused on killing people and the immunity that comes with killing behind a badge? What if we held them accountable for the role they play in escalating? What if instead of macing us for expressing our anger at their killing, they cried with us? What if we didn't have a police force so obsessed with convicting that they could actually properly perform their duties? What if instead of daring Julius Jones to run, the officer had pointed out that he doesn't meet the description? When our outrage is the part that gets attention and not the brutality of police, we perpetuate a cycle of violence with no end in sight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adriana Laws.
Time to start doing something.
Adriana Laws.
So I've actually, I don't even know if you guys have even explained what this agenda item is. I've been in and out the meeting trying to get people signed up, because Mayor Holt, since you refused to meet with the public, the public has come to you today. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time on this agenda item while I research the rest of the agenda items that I signed up to speak on, and make sure the rest of the people here that be heard today are ready to speak as well. Thank you.
Okay, Jess Eddy.
I haven't smelt the stink of bureaucratic bullshit obstructing the truth since I worked at the University of Oklahoma. I'm disgusted, particularly with you two, and your refusal to hold the police department accountable and to hold yourselves accountable for the continued murder of vulnerable people. Now, I was in the meeting with David Holt that culminated in him, out of the blue, not at our request, suggesting and assembling a task force. Those of, we are educated people here in the community, and we are capable of understanding and seeing that for what it is. Nothing more than a delay tactic and a symbol of you're puppeteered by the FOP, both of you. You are scared of the FOP. And because of your fear and your cowardice and your white supremacy to continue to do business as you do and as you know, and your fear to not do things that are new and uncomfortable for white men of privilege, black and brown people, children and mentally ill, are continued and will continue to be murdered and slain in the streets. And we're done appeasing with you, appeasing to your moral ideas, trying to ask for you to comprehend and empathize with the families. You refuse to meet with the families. You refuse to meet with the public. You refuse to accept truth and facts. You permit a police chief who blatantly disputes facts about his department, yet you want us to sit here and be okay with doing another study that will be employed by him, essentially, and you two, to further obscure the truth. The truth is that OKCPD is the second deadliest police department in the damn nation. That's the truth. And the truth is Wade Gurley has no capacity to hold himself accountable. The truth is the community has asked and demanded his resignation. The truth is he was put in there as a puppet by the FOP, and you two scumbags play a central role in doing that. We all know that you, you used to be a financial manager. What do you know about policing, hiring a police officer? But you made the decision without the input from the community, in spite of the input from the community. And what do you get? An idiot who starts a riot on May 30th, who wants to crush it, who can't even speak to the public, who's incompetent, who gets out there like Trump and denies that his department is killing the people it's killing. What are you doing? What are you doing? It's obscene. People are dying. And then you present working group, task force, RFP committee, bureaucratic layer after bureaucratic layer of bullshit. Fire the damn police chief.
That concludes the citizens who signed up to speak on that item. Is there any concluding statement from Kenny or MT? We don't have anything from you, Mr. Washington. Well, apparently we do have something.
Quiet, because Michael don't play, does he? See how that works?
All right, go ahead, Mr. Washington.
See how that works? Now then, Michael Washington, 2900 North East Eighteenth Street with the Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, with the 1-1 on the back end of it. Now everybody, you heard me? How you doing over there, buddy? Now then, what in blazing determination hell are you people really thinking that we are some idiots or fools around here? Let me look at a little bit of idiotic reading that I have here. AD under section seven, professional services agreement, professional my behind. Y'all a long way from being professional. Number one, professional agreement with 21CP Solutions LLC to conduct a law enforcement study not to exceed $193,000 plus. How many of these doggone studies y'all gonna have every damn year? How many long, how many times these killings been going over innocent people every year, and nothing has been done? All y'all doing is spending the taxpayers' dollars instead of spending it on us and let us police y'all. This is what a real decision needs to come, because we are out here every day and see the inadequacies and deadly killings going on every day. And for those who not being killed, they are out here suffering blatant brutality or being harassed by police officers, scared to drive down the street to get a candy bar now. Come on now, let's keep it real with Michael, because Michael ain't gonna play with you today. You understand me? I was one of those people, but at the same time, they back up off Michael. Why? Because Michael got an ink pen and likes to have some fun with it. You understand me? But not everybody has that pleasure of luxury of knowing how to deal with this fallacy police department. And you were very right, young man, what you said a while ago. The federal who? The FOP? Fraternal Order of Police? Y'all don't run nothing. They tell y'all what to do, man. Come on now. You already know it. As a matter of fact, that fake union that they got, y'all know this is Michael every day, so don't think I'm doing for an audience. This is me every day, every time you see me, wherever I go, right? Now then, this fake Fraternal Order of Police, their union runs y'all, tell y'all what to do, when to move, how to jump, and when to fly. Okay, but it's now time that an independent, instead of private agency, we need to knock them all the way out the picture and take order like the citizens deserve and have the right to have. You can't come in and play favoritism. Like I said, Chief Gurley in and of himself, he has turned his head on a lot of things. Why? Because he's controlled by his buddies and know that he's safe, because the union going to demand if y'all do something with him, we'll all walk off the force. Come on, power. Watch it, let's speak, let's speak truth to power, y'all. Huh? Is that what it is? Y'all know doggone well, if you're disciplined, Gurley, and other police agencies within the state of Oklahoma, of y'all decision and departments, that the whole police department ought to walk out, then you got to call the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marines in. It's what they don't want, y'all. Well, let me tell y'all something here today. You got people, citizens, that were concerned about our loved ones, we're concerned about our own safety, and you can best believe one name thing next time. If this thing is not corrected, we will file a citizen's complaint, not only in the state court, but federal court. I need help, because I'm ready to do it, skip, pass, press, and then a jump. Now then, in concluding then.
Mr. Washington, we're already past three minutes.
I know my time is up. I know my time is up, because I don't play. Asta la vista, ah, baby, I will be back. Have a good day.
All right, any concluding, any concluding words on this item, Mr. C. Major?
No.
All right, I want to thank Kenny and MT for all their great work on this.
I would like to, is my mic on? Can we vote separately on this item, please?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I do have a few things I'd like to speak to, in hopes that, I guess, my motion to vote separately on this actually gets seconded.
We don't need to have a motion on that necessarily.
Oh, really? Okay.
We'll handle that, that should be good.
Well, so, I think my concerns about this, this consultant in particular, and I think this whole process, as I've watched it fold out and spoken with working group members and task force members, and I think, and it does go really back to the root of my frustration and even the difficulty with the resolution on the six items, in that it is fundamentally couched in the frame of policing, when I would say at least three of the items, if not maybe four, really are completely separate from policing. And I continue to reflect on these incidents happening in our city. That there is a, there's a fundamental culture issue of understanding or believing who is and who is not dangerous, because people with mental illness are no more likely to be violent than people without mental illness. But that's how publicly and culturally we see people with particularly severe mental illness. People who live outside are not more likely to be violent or harm anyone than people who live inside, but that's how our society sees, sees things. And, and so I think my concern with this consult in particular is that they are so focused in policing and the idea that, you know, you just need better community relations or you need better training, when studies have shown that increasing the number of CIT trained officers doesn't reduce the use of force that those officers use, particularly on people that they're responding to those mental health calls with. And so, I know that this resolution has things that are addressing police issues and things that, in my mind, should be alternative, community, non-policing roles. And so, that's kind of one of my concerns with, with this consult in particular. I think my second issue is talking with members of the working group, of the selection committee in particular, the, I would say even culture of those groups. You know, I've heard reports of members of the working group feeling disrespected by certain city staff members when they've asked questions. I have recently heard of the resignation of one of the members because they felt like this group wasn't being treated as a priority by city leadership, and, and to the end, it just sort of, it does feel like we're sort of going through these motions rather than trying to discuss and have a real conversation about, about some of the root problems. And again, and that's, I think, why my concerns with 21CP in particular are that when I read about work they've done in other cities, it's, it is, they're sort of grazing the surface and sort of nibbling at the edges without really digging into, you know, some like essential culture issues, talking, to talk about how we really restructure our system so that we're actually addressing root problems rather than responding to those problems when they erupt with armed police. So, I just, I, that's sort of what I wanted to say and part of why I'd like to vote on this separately.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to make a couple comments, too, in regard to, in regard to this. I'm just sitting on the task force and listening to the concerns of our community, and not only listening to the concerns of the community on this task force, but serving a ward that experiences police interactions on a different scale every single day, every single day. And even myself, I'm not going to lie, I get nervous when I'm driving in my own community and officers are behind me. And it's not to say I'm doing anything wrong. I may be, I may be going five miles over, I just say that, but it may be more. But either way, I know I serve a community that has constantly said they are overharassed and overpoliced. And I, that tugs at me every single day, because I want to create a better atmosphere for everyone, not just the people that I'm serving, but the officers that serve them, because we have to bridge it some kind of way. We have to. And that's the difficulty in doing this work. That's the difficulty that we have. And it rips my heart every single time I have to see an officer involved shooting, not just in our city, but anywhere, anywhere, that you see someone who was assumed to have something and they didn't. And it's always justified, and it hurts my soul. It hurts me as an African American. It hurts me as black. It hurts me as a person of color. All, I have all of these titles when I'm black, but- I have all of these titles when I'm Black, but it hurts me as a woman to even understand that mothers have to have these conversations daily. Families of color have to have these conversations daily, and other communities don't. We have to be responsible for our village when it comes to these types of conversations. And I have a real difficulty in this, and I know, I guess it's two things which are the questions that I raise, is why I have a difficulty in supporting this. I know it's gonna pass anyway, but the fact that we had, in this particular, because it's too close to home for us to have a task force, then the smaller force, and then the RFP, and we have so much city influence on these things, when it should be truly community-led for us to have these conversations. And in particular, and I'm not trying to call our police chief out, but we haven't even talked to him personally about our concerns, and I just, I'm not saying that he should have to come to us, but it's just, I feel like there should be a willingness to want to work with us, to figure this out together, and we haven't been able to have that type of conversation, and that's really difficult for me. That's difficult for me. And the fact, again, that we're trying to ensure that we do not remain number two. This is crazy. Oklahoma should not be a top ten for anything in that nature. However, our city structure is harming, and we have people who are dying at the hands of our officers, unfortunately, whatever the situation may be, at alarming rates. And there has to be, there has to be a better way for us to have better conversations, there has to be a better way for our residents, especially the ones who have said, and I'm not going by rumors, I'm going by facts, who say they are overharassed and overpoliced. There has to be a better way for us to work through this process. And that's why I was silent at the task force meeting, again, because I know what we have to do. We're the policyholders here on the city level. So I know what my task is, but I wanted to hear from the people that are on the task force to understand where their thoughts are. And there were so many different thoughts, there were so many different concerns, there are so many different community conversations and neighborhood conversations we will never know, that are still yet to be heard by us. The people who came today could probably get off, but the people who are directly impacted, they have to work every single day. They don't know they have a line of communication to call and talk about what's happened to them. I know there was a young lady that reached out to me most recently, and I'm still waiting for her to reach back out, but she was reaching out to me on behalf of someone else because their child had been killed in an incident, but either way, they didn't even know the avenues to go as far as to retrieve his car, to get other things that are a part of this investigation or homicide. And I thought about that, I was like, wow, we don't have that type of mechanism in place for these types of things. And I know I'm talking on a tangent, but these are the things I hear all the time when it comes to our communities. So it's, while I, I'm happy that we're going to look at this in a different way, I'm still nervous and reluctant because we know when we bring these things in front of having these types of conversations, they're recommendations at the end of the day. They still have to be voted on, they still have to be accepted, and then they still have to be implemented. So that's where we are, we're trying to figure out where the implementation process is going to lie when all of this is said and done. So while I expect for 21 CP to do what they need to do in order for us to look at this in a different way for our city, I am very reluctant to support it because of that close vote. That's what really bothers me. It was split diversely, and when I say diverse, with the diversity aspect, I mean, it was very, it was split in that aspect, and that's the part that really bothers me, that carries me in this particular, in this particular vote, in this item. So those are my thoughts, so I personally, while I won't support it, I am hopeful in what we can do to better the relations and implement now other things as they do the work that we want to see further as this process continues.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, were you gonna say something?
No, no, go ahead.
So first, thanks for everyone who came today. Thank you for the words I just heard from council. I am very often surprised that I serve on city council because this wasn't my plan. My plan was to be an English teacher, and I was, if you remember. I taught on the south side of our city, English and college preparation, and I've taught as an adjunct professor, film studies and English and philosophy, and I've, with the exception of last year, never made more than 24, 25, 30, $35,000 a year, never. And I never did any of those jobs for money. I did it because, God help me, I love people, even when that's hard. I love writing, and I love research, and my research as an undergrad, the two tours of grad studies was media violence. And I've spoken to this so many times that my research was, I wanted to know the root causes of real-life violence. I wanted to know why when in 1999, I was a junior at Choctaw High School, didn't matter if you're a Republican politician or a Democratic politician, if you were on the news channels, after those kids shot and killed people in Columbine, the culprits, they told us, were Marilyn Manson, Mortal Kombat, Doom the video game, Biggie and Tupac. I just knew in my heart that was wrong because I had grown up, I had grown up on horror movies. My older half-sister introduced me to Nightmare on Elm Street when I was five years old, God help me. But that research led me to realize what those real roots of cyclical violence are, and it's generational poverty, it's a lack of investment in neighborhoods, a lack of prioritizing certain neighborhoods. So it didn't surprise me at all when I started knocking doors in 2018, and I asked residents what their concerns were for their neighborhood and their hopes were for our city. It did not surprise me at all when they said, expand maps into my neighborhood. And I always knew the subtext of it. I always knew the subtext of what they were asking me to do. They wanted investments in sidewalk, transit, trees, parks, parks with recreation. I always, I knew it because my research had told me that, but then, to Councilwoman Nice's earlier point, sometimes it takes listening to people to hear it. You can believe a thing, but until you actually talk to the people, it's something else. When I was knocking doors, I was listening to a podcast in between doors, and one of them had an interview. I hope this makes sense because it's really explained a lot to me, but there was an interview with the director of the 1978 film Halloween. And if you remember from that film, the Michael Myers, the killer, his doctor, his mental health provider, calls him evil the whole time. This is a force of evil, and it must be destroyed. In the interview, a recent interview, John Carpenter said, let me tell you how Michael Myers came to be, like how he came up with the idea. And I think this is connected to some of the problems that we are facing as a people. He said that as a teenager, his parents moved him from the north to, I think, Bowling Green, Kentucky. If I got that wrong, forgive me, but to the south. And he was, as you know, John Carpenter's white, that's important to the story, and he was very confused in the late 50s and 60s because there were people who identified themselves as Christians and were okay with the lynchings that were taking place, the cross burnings which were taking place, laughing about them, justifying them under Christianity. And John Carpenter's like, how's that possible that someone can look human, outwardly look human, and yet do evil? Do you understand what I just said? And then he came up with Michael Myers, human, but does evil. In other words, Michael Myers is an allegory, a metaphor, we should not read him literally, he has an allegory, a metaphor for white supremacy. How can a human profess to be one thing, human, Christian, good, and do harm to others? I didn't know that until I heard that interview. But I think part of the consequence of Michael Myers being called evil and someone who has so infiltrated our pop culture, whether you like horror movies or not is not the point, he's infiltrated the pop culture. And unfortunately, what I think he does is, this was someone, as you remember from that movie, who quote, "escaped from a mental health facility." I think what we have done is we, in our popular culture, have stigmatized people with mental health. And in that stigmatization, we have said that there is only one way to deal with it, and you know it at the end of every single Halloween film, of which there are at least 10, you kill them spectacularly. I am asking for a culture change in how we see each other. I am asking for us to see each other again as human beings, actual human beings. And in doing so, I'm asking us to reconsider how it is a human being can cause harm to another. And I have quoted so many times up here, the Stanford Economic Research, that tells us that for every year a kid grows up in a better environment, teen pregnancy goes down, college chances go up, they earn more over their lifetime, they have more stable family environments. We also know from that same Stanford Economic Research that the kiddos who grow up in those not-so-better environments, it's places associated with crime, income inequality, a lack of social cohesion, in other words, a lack of community, and segregation. To say it is to speak the truth. That same Stanford Economic Research tells us that we do not have to wallow in the past, we confront it, and then it is the task of good government to invest in those neighborhoods which have been too long enough behind, and I take you back to Maps 4. That's why I advocated for everything I did in Maps 4, to invest in those neighborhoods, to help those kids who are not in those better environments right now. And over the next decade of our lives, we know those investments are coming. And I said, after the weekend of those protests in late May, yes, they're coming, but was I too late? Were the people who crafted this map, were we too late? And it will haunt me probably till my dying day, yet I remain hopeful. This resolution that I was able to craft with the input of residents, with Councilwoman Nice, Councilwoman Hammond, that I crafted after, at my own asking, went on police ride-alongs. And I did this before the violence erupted this summer. I did this a year ago. I spoke with our chief, I spoke with City Manager Freeman, I spoke with our municipal council. I won't do what I normally do, which is read from this council. I wanted to read the resolution, but I would encourage everyone listening to go back and look at it. I do want to point out one of them, though, because remember, my, well, I'll just read one of them. We said, we wanted to research across this city and across this, I'm sorry, across this country and across this globe, best practices as it related to, could it be that when a resident calls and says someone is experiencing a mental health crises, that we are able to connect them with a mental health provider who responds to that situation, connects them, as you recall from the resolution, to a crisis center, to ensure that they receive services rendered as opposed to putting them in contact with our criminal justice system? That's the language, and I'm forever thankful to Municipal Council, Amanda Carpenter, for helping craft that language. As a writer, language matters a lot to me, but I want to make that language crystal clear that it is a reality if we want it to be in this budget this summer. In Denver, in Denver, a pilot program of what I have just described exists. This is not just my imagination. This is real, it is possible, and it is time, I think, for us to confront our past. It is time for us to shake loose the idea that whenever someone asks us to confront the past, that we go, I didn't do that, I didn't do that, that's not my fault. Yeah, I know, I didn't either, but our country did, our laws did, the language of those laws did. And it is up to us, if we truly, truly believe in those words of a more perfect union, to confront the past, stare it in the face, that's the only way you beat a monster, I learned in all that research, admit where our culpability lies and not wallow in it, but move forward in a productive, healing, and restorative manner. If we do not do those things, this cycle of violence will continue. And I'm so sorry that that's true, but it is true. And I really appreciate everyone taking time to let me speak at length the way that I did. I am to understand that that is not always something that a lot of people appreciate about me. But I do not know how much longer I will be in this role, and because of that, I will make use of the time I have this role. And God help me, whoever takes over after I am done, they continue this work, because we did not get to this moment overnight. This is a 400-year-old problem. It will not be undone in one councilperson's term, one mayor's term, it's just not possible. But we must move forward. This resolution must become part of this city's budget, and we must make sure that that oversight committee, that people like Joanne, and Dr. Thompson, and Paula, and Grace, and Tim, that they asked for, that must be part of this contract, and it is. We must also make sure, and this is key, and my conclusion, we must make sure that the different communities which make up Oklahoma City, we are one OKC, but out of many, one. And we must acknowledge the many, we must acknowledge the differences. We must no longer say, I don't see color. That is untrue. Within color is beauty, within color is difference, within difference comes perspective, from perspective comes growth, and there is nothing wrong with seeing someone's color and difference. I watched the documentary Crypt Camp about the history of the disabilities movement. There is nothing wrong with seeing those differences, but we must uplift each other. So it is imperative that this contract follow through with its words, that we as a city follow through with its words, and make sure our indigenous communities, our Asian community, our folk in our disability community, our LGBTQ community, our Hispanic Latinx community, our Black community, all of these communities. our Black community, all of these communities must have a seat at a table. And to Nikki's point, Councilwoman Nice's point, there are people who have never spoke at that podium before. There are people who do not know when we meet, that we meet, that a sales tax is how we fund things, that a property tax is how we fund things. They don't know about MAPS. And it's not because they're dumb, it's because they're working two or three jobs and nothing in K-12 has ever taught them. Please believe me. So we must make sure those communities have a seat at a table. So you all who are here today, you must make sure that you reach out to Assistant City Manager Sudal, City Manager Freeman, and make sure that anybody in any of those communities, any community, and if I left one out, please forgive me, but any community that has ever had a historic legacy of some unpleasant encounters with law enforcement, those communities must have a seat at this table, and they must speak on all six of those resolution items and how they can be strengthened. They must, because without their voice, this effort will have been for naught. My time on council would have been for naught. I heard the no votes for this contract, and they asked for what I asked for. The review committee for the engagement of all those different communities, that going forward on the working group, going forward on the task force, that it's time that those communities speak rather than having the city speak at them. So barring the words of Councilwoman Nice, it is with great reluctance that I ultimately cannot support this contract, not because I don't support my resolution, I believe my resolution is part of the pathway forward, I would have preferred a different consultant. And I hope that this consultant does what they need to do to make sure that everything I just said becomes addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Do we, Councilwoman Hammond has asked for this to be voted separately, so why don't we just go ahead and do that while it's fresh on our minds? Is there a motion to approve item 7A D? There's a motion in a second. Cast your votes as soon as you are given that opportunity.
Mayor, I just want to correct, that was Councilwoman Greenwell that moved that item.
It says, oh, yeah, correct. I believe, if you want to go back at some point, it was, yeah, there we go. Greenwell and Stone. All right. Cast your votes, passes five to three. And now we'll move to the rest of the consent docket, which is, now we're on item AF and AG, which I believe helped the presentation, Mr. City Manager. And MT, and Kenny, thank you so much for your work on item E.
I agree. Thank you all both for your work and for the work of the task force and the members that have been there so far. I know that they put a lot of work in, and there's a lot of work still to be done. And we are committed to engage in the community as we go through this process. So I appreciate both of you, and MT, your leadership in this, too, and Kenny, the heavy work of the RFP Committee and all those members in the community that worked in that, I appreciate that. So on this item, we've got, actually, on AF and AG, we did pull item AE already, and that was so that we could come back and revisit that, as I explained earlier. On these two, it's trying to deal with being able to move forward with the contract through the end of the year. And Kenny, give us an explanation, Assistant City Manager Kenny Sudal, give us an explanation on these changes in these contracts.
Just very quickly, as most of you know, it appears that I originally had it deadline December 30th of this year, so in eight days. And these, as we were putting this together, we're putting together some contracts to be able to extend, and just while the programs could not continue past that date, we wanted, these amendments originally were to provide for some of the administrative work and closing out the projects and everything. So hot off the presses, you know, last night, there was a package that was voted by the House and voted last, late last night by the Senate, so it's going to the President. They would extend the CARES Act out to December of 2021, so it'd give us a whole nother year. So we went ahead and pulled the city-county health contract. We did leave the one on for Communities Foundation of Oklahoma, related to our resident support program, and one with the bank to continue that program as we were processing the minority small business program stuff. I do anticipate we'll be bringing back to you some amendments to extend some of these contracts out further so that we can actually continue the actual program parts of that, where there are unexpended funds left. And so just wanted to kind of brief you on that. Again, if the President doesn't sign it, or something, you know, goes that way, we'll have to adjust again. So we're kind of, we're trying to be nimble here, but that's, just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. And if there's any questions on those two particular contracts, we'd be happy to answer those.
I have a question. Is it possible, I see the increase of $150,000 right now to extend, I guess based on the information, and I could be, I mean, I could be totally wrong, is there a way for us to amend an increase from the floor, to add some more to this, just so we can just do what we need to do when it comes to this particular program to ensure that our residents are taken care of?
You know, I think right now, what we've done, wanted to do is come back with this to the council with the proposal, because we don't know what will happen. And exactly if it's approved, that we would have the ability to come back and extend that program, that we could do it at the time that we have the authorization to do so. Because we can't continue that with city funds, we have to do that through the CARES funds. So our plan was just come back as quickly as we could and revisit that. I know Aubrey and Teresa here can speak to where we are with the program.
Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. Councilwoman, there are, there are some funds in the administrative budget for the community CARES partners to operate that would help disseminate the remaining program funds. So I think we'll have enough funding administratively to continue to get all of that $12.5 million into the community's hands. So the $150,000 that the city was funding with general fund was for the wrap-up of the program. That would be for all the accounting and auditing services that we would do after the program closes. So we wouldn't really need any additional funds for administering the remaining program funds to the community, and I think the 150 would take care of the wrap-up costs. But if additional funds did come in for the community CARES partners to operate, they're going to continue to be open as partners to the city to be available for that. And Teresa is here, if you have any questions about that.
Basically, I think Aubrey covered it, but any other questions?
No. Okay.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate your partnership in this.
Okay. If there's no more questions on that, we'll move on to the presentation for item AJ. I've got nothing for you on this.
You better check again. Better check again.
On what item, Mr. Washington?
Yeah, the item that you just spoke, AF, the one that you just talked about, that $150,000 money allocated for this particular program. I'm sorry?
You turned in a yellow sheet for item AF.
Yes, she's got, should be, ask her now.
We'll pause for a moment while she goes through it.
All right.
If we don't have it, then I'd ask you to go out and fill out another one.
Why do we want to keep Michael Washington quiet? What is the deal? This is the bottom of the sky.
You have it, Francis? Mr. Washington, we don't have a slip for that. You're welcome to go.
That's she come right there. She, I guess she was on the phone or something.
Did you just fill it out, like 30 seconds ago?
No, been farther than that.
All right. Go ahead. Yes, gotcha.
There is a God in heaven. Now then, reading in your hearing. Amendment number three to the operational agreement for Coronavirus Relief Fund, Resident Support Program with the Communities of Communities Foundation of Oklahoma, increase of $150,000 and extending the term for provision of administrative services December 31st through March 31st, 2021. Now, all of that sounds good, y'all. But just who all is this money is allocated for this particular program sponsored by you people? Who is it all going to? I have heard nothing about this here, watch out now, thank you, Councilwoman Nice, I have heard nothing about this fund here until reaching you people today. Now, I'm a very busy person, true enough, and I'm very active and very informative. Now, just think, if I don't know about this here going on, we know quite naturally, without no question of fact, that the poor community people themselves are not going to be aware of it, and not going to know to sign up, or whatever the case is necessary to be, to take advantage of such a program. Am I right or wrong? We all know so too, though, that the monies allocated for these particular central things are going to the wealth and health, the wealthy people who run the state of Oklahoma. Now, let's keep it real, y'all, all I mean, throwing it puns intended, but we have to keep the fact of the matter is, poor people don't get this kind of relief. In fact, as a matter of fact, it is poor people who suffer the most because they don't know who to go to, because they don't have the money, because they can't get the operations that cost $90,000 for it. You see what I'm getting at? So now then, with a shake of the twist, we know too then, that the monies are allocated for these people once again, it should have been on the news, it should be in papers that you write up, it should be passed around in stores. Why do you not want people to know something about it? Because too much money will go away from those intended people and go to somebody like myself who are nobody, or my community, the poor communities, Asian community, Hispanic community, Native American community. I guarantee you, if you took a survey and research right now, none of this here would have been affecting us, maybe a handful, why? Because you can't make it look like it's flagrant discrimination. So in other words, a program made for 10 people, you have to allow maybe two of the opposing lower-class citizens. So those two people out of the 10, now that's eight, who's receiving the benefit of monies from the CARES Act and the Community CARES Partners Program. Listen to this, Community CARES Partners Programs. So what that's saying is there are partners in on this. Who are all the partners involved? Yes, I can go to city management, yes, I can go to the various state agencies and get this information, but Michael Washington knows the steps he needs to take. Why are we not educating the public? Why is not people educated? Is there any monies being set aside to educate the public about why this fund is existing? No, they're not. Because I would have been there, and I would have been teaching on it. I'm on Facebook all the time. Michael Washington loves to saw what you people doing and not doing. Oh, man, I love it. Like dancing to the tune of a new beat. You hear me? Anything y'all do good or bad, and don't get me wrong, now, I love people, and I love the majority of the people up here, because I'm a Christian, I have to. However, step back and take a moment, deep breath. We cannot allow positions, people with money, to determine the overall effect of how lower-class citizens is to be reckoned with.
You're over time. Thank you.
And once again, that move.
All right, item AJ. We've got, received the fiscal year 2020 Public Safety Sales Tax Report.
Yes, Doug Dowler, our Assistant Finance Director, is here to give us an update on this. This is a report that we do every year, that is part of that journal entry of judgment that gives guidance as to how the public safety sales tax funds have to be used and the ways that we use those. The city auditor conducts an audit to ensure that we're in compliance, and so I'll just let Doug just give us a quick presentation on this report. This is from fiscal year 20.
That's correct. Yeah, so Doug Dowler, Assistant Finance Director, Budget Director, here to speak about the Public Safety Sales Tax Report. This is something that's required under the Journal Entry of Judgment that the city entered into in 1993. So each year, we present to you all a resolution of how we're planning to spend the police and fire sales tax funds in the coming year. And then this report reviews all the expenses from the prior year to make sure that they fit within those guidelines that were established in that resolution. We use the financial reports that Finance Director Bryant spoke about earlier this morning in terms of, these are generally accepted accounting principles, these are the final numbers from FY '20, and we review, again, review how those were spent to make sure they were in conformance with the resolution that was adopted. Then the city auditor's office reviews those expenses and those classifications to make sure they were done appropriately. They have weighed in that all the expenses were in conformance with the resolutions that were adopted, overseeing those funds in the coming year. You can see on the pages, there's a pie chart for each, for both police and fire, for the various projects that were funded and the dollar amounts that went to those areas. Councilman Greenwell, to your point, because this is a GAAP basis, you mentioned earlier about police and fire pension, there is included in here the contributions that the state made as well as a revenue. So that kind of inflates the total that you'll see there for revenues and expenses. We didn't actually spend that money, that was spent by the state, but we recognize that as a financial expense related to police and fire expenses. And so, again, there's the information there. This is on a GAAP basis, so this is generally accepted counting principles that were used here. There are slightly different numbers if you're looking for a cash basis, and those are contained in the footnotes if you're wanting to look at those information. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the Public Safety Sales Tax Report.
Questions for Doug? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That concludes what we had scheduled presentations for. We do have some citizens who signed up to speak on a couple of remaining consent docket items. So we'll move to item AT. We have Christopher Johnston.
Hello, everybody. How are you all doing? Good, sorry. I'm here as a very, as a concerned citizen.
I've got a name and address, please.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, sorry.
Christopher Johnston. What else do you need from me, sir?
I'm sorry, what?
What else do you need from me?
Oh, address, just your name and address.
Oh, okay. And then what item is this, am I speaking on?
Well, you signed up for AT, sir.
Okay, and, because it's not up there. Okay, yes, 1714 Northeast 44th Street. I wanted to say, I am very glad that Mr. Cooper, Ms. Hammond, Ms. Nice, that you all talked about this, brought a couple of things with me, just to show that we're actually fighting something that's systemic. This is a book I got at the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama. This is about states' laws and race and color. This is just the states, and it's about an 800-page document. I've also got here, since I'm a member of the American Psychological Association, recommendations from the top people who know what they're talking about in reducing police brutality, and I will read those later. But I want to say some words that I spoke at the jail trust meeting yesterday. I always hear that when we talk about dealing with police brutality, the reason why I'm mentioning this is that I think that we should cease all awards of any monetary means to the police department until we actually start dealing with the corrupt structure. There needs to be rules of engagement when dealing with the people. And I always hear that rules bog folks down. Well, I served in the United States Army, and I fought two wars. I served for 10 years, and I'm disabled from those wars. And my last deployment was in 2010 in Afghanistan, where we were there for 365 days and we received 363 days of enemy contact. And we were in southern Afghanistan in Kandahar Province, and we pushed the Taliban out to Pakistan. It had never been done before. We stepped foot in soil that Western eyes had never seen, not even Alexander the Great. And this is to show what proper training and rules and regulation does. There was a Taliban fighter in July that was firing at us with a PKM, that is a 762 belt-fed machine gun. We returned fire. He got scared, threw his weapon down, and ran off to the corner of his hut, put his hands up. We ceased fire. He was no longer a threat. This was a hardened fighter, not a 15-year-old boy that was trembling, a hardened fighter, trained. We put him in with zip cuffs, we gave him water, and we delivered him to the local police because we had training. We had training, that's what it does. We need rules of engagement, set procedures that if they are violated, there is punishment. And if it works for the United States Army, that has won many wars, that is one of the most feared fighting forces of this world, then it can work for our peacekeepers. Having studies is great, but there has to be repercussions, there has to be changes of behavior. And how is that done is with proper punishment and reinforcement. That is behaviorism, that is evidence-based psychology. You have to punish people. We cannot give in, lick the boots of the FOP, we cannot sit there and sit on our knees and let them run things. They are a lobbyist group. It's time we take justice back. And to end, Taylor v. Rios, just recently was ruled by the Supreme Court that qualified immunity is not a blank check. That is our conservative Supreme Court, not Bernie Sanders. We're coming. Let's start doing something, and let's start doing something now.
Michael, Michael Washington?
Lovely meeting today, y'all. You know what, I just have a little bit of fun myself. Now then, just so that I don't miss out. Okay. They've been giving y'all what now? Oklahoma City, except for the benefit of Oklahoma City Police Department, a $250,000 award from the Department of Justice Programs through the National Institute of Justice, DNA Capacity Enhancement, and... DNA Capacity Enhancement and backlog reduction program, ratifying submission of the internet-based application by Chief of Police and the Police Department Business Manager, authorize the merit to sign the necessary documents, authorize the police business manager or management specialists to submit internet acceptance requests for funds and provide reports as required, and authorize the city treasurer to receive and deposit the funds in the grant management fund. Man, I've heard it all. Now, here we are today. Do even the Justice Department know the Oklahoma City Police Department? Obviously, they don't, because they don't deserve a award of any kind. What they do deserve a award is with an intense, independent investigation into the flagrant abuse of human rights of the citizens here that they are sworn to serve and protect. Well, serving and protect isn't the kind of serving and protect that I like for most people. Why? Because they use the discrimination measures. They don't, as Councilwoman M. Nice just talked about, how can you award someone who deliberately and flagrantly and recklessly go outside the scope of their job duties to harass and or shoot people down and beat them down because I can do this? Sounds like to me that's a disgruntled individual who have found a twerk, have found something they can get into to kind of pay back the family members who did them wrong while they were growing up. Now, this gentleman here was talking about earlier about the frightening experiences when people are growing up. I'm trying to tell y'all to do, if we had investigations to do more thoroughly into officers becoming officers, this money here should be set aside to investigate them kind of people backgrounds. We know a lot of them officers today who are serving and are citizens in their city's area boards, who are civil servants, do not have adequate background checks. Why? Because there's a shortage of police officers in every state. Now then, so we need somebody to make up that vacancy. Woo, that's, that truth hits it, don't it? To make up those vacancies so that we can get federal funding from federal governments. We all know the federal government funds our state and city departments and all done with y'all, see? CARES Act, even before the CARES Act and all that. So we know that you got to fill them gaps in to get a certain amount of dollars from the federal government. And doing so, "Oh, this one, oh, we're showing, I want to get up there." Good God. But anyhow, no, no, don't be looking up the clock, man. I know it's time, I got, you can't shut me up.
Eighteen seconds, sir.
I got how many?
Fifteen seconds.
Oh, my God, y'all trying to cut me. I didn't even get started. I'm a long-winded man. Come on, man. Come on, I'm long-winded. But anyhow, man, let me get up out of here. You should get that money to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to investigate the racist, no-good officers on the police force and remove them, put them in jail where they belong, and that way they can feel the affection and brunt of what they do when they don't follow through and protect and seize other people, the public. I'm not gonna say I start a visa this time because y'all already know.
Okay, we're still on item A.T. Adriana Laws?
As I'm sure many of you know, studies show that there is an active epidemic in our country, a active genocide, if you will, the killings of black and brown people being slain by police departments all over the country. Oklahoma City Police Department, as we also know, is second in the nation for most citizens killed by a single police department per capita, predominantly black and brown people. Those facts are found at mappingpoliceviolence.org. Any of you can find them. I've done my research on all of you, so I know who all of you are, but you probably don't know who I am. So let me tell you a little bit about my experience. I worked as an intern, a city intern, for a municipality here in our county, and my job was to basically be trained on how to be a city manager. I worked in every aspect of public administration. I worked with the fire chief. I worked predominantly in the police department, side by side with the chief of police. So yes, Craig Freeman, I know how to do your job. With that being said, I know what it's like to respond to these calls with officers. I know what it's like to address issues within the police department. I know what it's like to watch a mayor or a city manager, because that's who I worked with directly, do their jobs, and protect the citizens, and hold police officers accountable. You guys refuse to take any accountability or show any remorse for the families of people who are murdered by our police in this city. So how can we expect our officers to do so when our elected officials, the highest-paid official in our city, Mr. Freeman, refuse to do those things? The right indecent thing to do would be to fire the chief of police, Wade Gurley, and hire someone who cares about our community members and the reputation of our city, because right now it's in the dumps when it comes to policing. That's where we're at. This agenda item is about accepting two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the DOJ, and I honestly can't see how we can accept any more money or put any more money into a police department that all they do is perpetuate harm and violence against our community members. We cannot accept any more funding for this police department, and those who do are complicit with the terms and conditions of state sanctioned violence against our community members. A little food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess Eddy?
This grant from the DOJ is similar to the grants the DOJ gives for body cams, only one of which the city, Oklahoma City Police Department have, body cams, not dash cams. I want you all to ask yourselves, why do you think they don't have dash cams when they're free from the DOJ? It's because transparency for not only the police department, but for the city of Oklahoma City is a liability. Public exposure of what goes on on the day today is a problem. Mr. Freeman, you said that you appreciate community input, but repeatedly over the summer and repeatedly recently, you've denied attempts from community members, particularly family members, whose family members have been killed by the police department. So don't double-handed gesture and say that you're interested in input and hearing from the community, and then not back it up, okay?
True.
Now, we all need to know, and I just think it needs to be spoken very loudly and clearly, how we got to where we are today. And while Bill Citi, when he led the police department, also had nation-leading murders, the difference between him and Gurley is that at least Citi would say, "We have a problem." And what happened to Citi is in acknowledging the problem and looking for solutions, he accepted a DOJ grant for body cams. And what happened after that is the power machine, the political machine of the FOP, went into work to undermine him. Not just undermine him, to just oust him. And you two played a critical role in that. I've been informed that Mayor Holt broke a deal with the FOP to not, to not fight its ousting that Gurley was a part of in exchange for the FOP's support for his mayoral bid. Something about that seems to be confirmed, that Mayor Holt is reluctant to criticize in any way the city of Oklahoma City Police Department. Anyway, in fact, the most he's willing to say is that he's not able to do anything, which is exactly what Mayor Holt says whenever he's asked to do something that might garner him outcry from conservatives in the county, every time. So what happened is, a coup, and Citi was ousted, the man who would accept that the Oklahoma City Police Department had a problem, who installed body cams about ten years after every other major police department in the nation did, thrown out, put in by a puppet, put in a puppet, Wade Gurley, historically notorious, Ellen, I think they call him, in the police department of just being an idiot, but somebody who was loyal to the FOP, somebody who can't take any responsibility for anything. And now, we sit here with more blood on the streets, more dead children, more mothers, more sisters and brothers crying, asking for justice. So don't you two tell me you give a damn about what the community thinks, because you don't.
All right, we have a few citizens who signed up to speak on item A.U., and we'll start with Christopher Johnston.
Abolitionist James Russell Lowell wrote, "Then it is the brave man chooses while the coward stands aside." We seem to be talking a lot about the FOP, and I've got here some statistics from a watchdog group that shows that they overwhelmingly donate to Democrats and liberal Republicans, because they know the political persuasions of our country. This is the national, and one could surmise that the local chapters are following step in step with that, because they know that the future of politics for the next twenty years will be fought out between the left wing and the moderate Democrats. Let's see, our mayor has an A-rating by the, in 2010 by the NRA, sixty-two percent approval rating by the Oklahoma Second Amendment Association, which is attached to a hate group in Oklahoma City. And I've looked at some of your money. I do want to know, because you have taken a lot from oil companies, you took about a hun, you took one-hundred-and-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-two bucks and eighteen cents from Balance Forward, which is a super PAC. I'd like to know who is all included in that. And again, you know, we need to stop caring about white racist Republicans in this state. We need to. We need to stop caring about their little feelings. Who cares? It's time to do what's right. It's time to do justice. "Because the evil and the wicked are no longer safe, and their walls of comfort and that they have built by oppression shall fall like the walls of Jericho. Evil shall be punished swiftly and with enduring justice. We are the army of justice. We don on our armor for battle daily and fight. Hark the cries of revolution and gaze upon the felix and justice. We will tear down white supremacy brick by brick and cast that evil into the flames of justice, burning it until its final death, ensuring it never returns." I know, we are going to smite down the system that people have gone so comfortably in. I swear this before all of you. Let your gods or your God forgive you, because we will not. We are going to take action. We will run people against you, and we will remove you from power. The time is gone. Verily, the hypocrites will be in the lowest depth of the fire. No helper will you find for them. Tyrannies, tyrannies, are perpetuated by diffident men who do not possess the courage to act out their beliefs. That is famed social psychologist Dr. Stanley Milgram. I'm so sick and tired of hearing the Nuremberg Defense. I was just following orders. It's time we start changing those orders. The reality is, again, as I mentioned, as a man who does psychological research or understands how humans work, nothing changes if we just talk about it. There has to be action, there has to be punishments, and there has to be rewards to create a desirable behavior deemed by our society. And our society says that the jig is up. The FOP need to be pushed out to the dumpster where they belong, and we, the people, take things back. It's time we start holding people accountable, because this is a country of law and order, and we demand some damn order right now. We can't have that without justice. It's time we start holding criminals and murderers of children, children, fifteen-year-old boy, shaking. I would like to see you all not move with a gun in your face, because I sure as hell did when I was a child.
Adriana Laws?
I, I forgot what I was gonna say. Thank you, Chris, for expressing the way that we all here feel. So, my experience trying to bring a group of people in here today, right, it's been kind of interesting, because this is the Oklahoma City City Council. These are, you know, where y'all have meetings almost every Tuesday, and the majority of the citizens in our city don't even know that. They don't know where to come to. They don't even know what door to come through. You know what I mean? They don't know how to sign up for public comment, where to give the slips. And I think that that is a major part of the problem that's being overlooked in our city, in our county, and in our state, is our citizens don't even know how to engage with the very people that we vote for in order to even start to hold any of you guys accountable. Mr. Freeman, like I said, I did a lot of work directly with another city manager, and I've been leading a campaign along with several others here for weeks now, trying to get meetings set up with you, Mr. Holt and Mr. Gurley. And let me tell you this, the city manager that I worked with, there was this city councilwoman, right, crazy white lady. She hated our black chief of police, and she, she was always trying to get him fired. City manager couldn't stand her. But guess what? Every time she, or one of the many citizens that she brought to speak in meetings with him, tried to schedule a meeting, he did it, because that's his job, whether he agreed or not. He at least made it seem like he cared enough about the citizens he was there to serve to at least meet with them and listen. We don't even get that kind of respect from you, our city manager here, in the biggest city in the state, and that's crazy, crazy. Mr. Holt, I know you've heard all the calls. We went to the precinct, we tweeted at you right by your house and asked you, could you come down and meet with us, and you refused. I'm kind of at a loss of options here about what we're supposed to do to try to implement better policies or at least get public output out there to you guys in the, in the most effective, efficient way as possible, because I know, at least you two know who I am. Y'all know who Jess is. Y'all know who the people are who come and we disrupt meetings usually, or we do all kinds of stuff. And we've tried to go about this the correct way with you all, and I really don't understand where else we're left to go here, right? So, again, this item is about approving more money for our police department. It would be a complete disgrace if we approved this agenda item today and give our police department some more money, and then they go out and kill another child tomorrow. On Monday, November twenty-third, they killed fifteen-year-old Stavyan Rodriguez. I have been working with that family to get resources, to get the funeral arranged. I attended the funeral. The community has stepped up and has taken care of these people, but why can't you guys? I don't understand. Not even a whole month later, one of the things we used in our campaigns was how the minutes, the seconds are ticking by, the hours until Oklahoma City Police Department kills someone else. And then I got the phone call and arrived on the scene of the murder of Benny Rodriguez. Imagine how I felt, standing there for hours, looking at a dead body, a dead black body on the ground. His family was there. I held his niece while she cried. And we can't even have the public decency, the human decency from you guys to even meet with the people that I deal with on a pretty regular basis. I just, I implore you guys to do the right thing. If you choose to keep funding this malicious menace to society that we call a police department, I'm gonna at least need you to take some accountability behind the actions that they take, because the blood is also on your hands. You guys are the ones, Craig Freeman, you're the one who hired Wade Gurley. You have the power to fire him. Mayor Holt and the rest of the city council members, you all are the ones who have the power to affect any type of policy changes that directly affect this police department. You guys. So instead of taking to social media, instead of yelling in the streets, the community is here today. You know what we want. We've made it clear. Let's make it happen.
Thank you. Michael Washington? This is still on item A.U.
Now then, very, very beautiful statement you made there. But did it go in one ear and quickly out the other? This is what we want to deal with today here. Now then, she just spoke about the young fifteen-year-old who complied with demands to drop his weapon. But what did the Oklahoma City Police say? "Oh, no, we gonna have some fun today. You don't need to drop your weapon, because we shouldn't have to come out here in the first place." This is how they're thinking. Now, the psychology of it, I wasn't there, but the circumstances kind of make me believe that that's how it ended up. Now then, let's speak about it this way then. So as the youngster begins to bend down, getting ready to drop it, pop, 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 pop. In other words, I guess a police officer was laying on the ground while he hit him. Is that what it was? Because he certainly wasn't a threat to any of the officers holding up, saying, "I'm not gonna drop anything," or whatever. Come on now, y'all have a video camera. Then you have a mentally ill man by the name of Benny Taylor. You hear me? Mentally ill, and family knows he wasn't a threat to anyone. But the problem of the matter is, y'all, that we don't take these things, these killings, seriously, and because we don't, innocent people lose their lives over nothing, over overzealous officers who, are y'all ready for this one? I'm gonna give a little bit of history a lot of people don't know about. You have it written up in your policy. Whatever you perceive as a threat, use deadly force. Watch out now. However, if you wrote in there to- However, if you wrote in there to say, this, that, and another, this step had to be taken, this had to be seen before you could pull your weapon, that's not in there. Oh, no, Michael Watson does his research, and I love doing it. I want to hold you people accountable. What am I gonna be every time I speak, man? Come on, man. Yeah, we're trying to try to quiet me up for some reason. That ain't gonna work. Now, so this money that y'all want to receive, which we know y'all gonna get, y'all don't, y'all gonna approve, that money needs to be targeted toward addressing the issues of mentally ill people, how to discover, how to, to realize when they're sick, or when they need to be in hospital, before they need to go to jail, before they use force on them. Everybody don't have the capacity to think as you, as an intelligent human being. Realize that, y'all. Don't discriminate against them people because they don't have it. The psychology behind all of this is that everybody will not be equal. Everybody gonna have some kind of mentally ill differences. I've got my mentally ill differences, because I don't like a lot of stuff going on. That's my mental illness. Okay? But y'all can also help me better that if y'all were sitting down and talking, like this lady said, does she have to be a director of a Black Lives Matter before you meet these people? Don't discriminate against the citizens of Oklahoma. We want the same recognition that you give everybody else. I'm not saying nothing about the Black Lives Matter and all the people, y'all sit down and talk to them. Why? Is that important, not these people? How y'all gonna discriminate and expect them to respect you, man? We got the same right to sit down and talk to you just like everybody else. As a matter of fact, if you, Michael Watson don't even have to sit down and talk to you. Respect these people and sit down and talk. They want to talk, they want to come to some resolution that's designed to, for everybody's benefit. They want to talk about sitting down on these committees that's gonna justify taking initiative so that everybody can get a peaceful, harmonious conclusion with the killings and things that are going on, y'all. Use this 38th hour that I know you're gonna approve for mental illness purposes. Train these officers. Bible says, "Train up a child on where it should go, and it will not depart for you." I will say goodbye on that.
Yes, Eddie?
Let's talk a little bit about one of the things of why people are so angry beyond just the simple fact that neither the mayor nor the city manager will meet with the families or other community leaders. On the night Stavion was shot and killed by six Oklahoma City Police Departments, at least one of them had the wherewithal, a woman, uh, not surprisingly, to use a less-than-lethal round. Five of them unloaded their magazines into a 120-pound, 15-year-old kid. And Gary Knight, Officer Gary Knight, gets on TV and says he refused to comply with commands and made a furtive movement and ultimately was shot. If it weren't for the era of cell phone footage, and if it weren't for the about 10 witnesses that were right there watching it, that would probably be the story that his mother would be living with today. The lie. It was nothing more than a lie. Not only was it a lie, if you're familiar with police department policy, it's against policy to comment on an ongoing investigation. But it's abhorrent when you use selective facts to confuse the public, to do propaganda, to protect an institution. And that's the problem, you see, with the community, the community's problem with policing in Oklahoma City is particularly bad, but throughout the nation, is that it's very clear to everyone that the police department thinks they're more important than anything else, that their cops are the heroes, that their lives are more important than Stavion's. And so, his value of his life, in their minds, is very low, which is why they're so trigger-happy and easily kill somebody. Same thing with Benny. Perhaps he had the fingernail file that he was accused of having on a mail post worker. A fingernail file. We know based on Gary Knight's conduct that if there was a real knife, they would have put that out. He puts out facts that look good for him, but he won't release the body cam that'll show what the eyewitnesses say, that Stavion not com- only complied with one command, two commands, three commands, but four. Come out of the building. Put the gun on the ground. Put your hands in the air. Show us your waistband. That's what the eyewitnesses are saying. I don't even know if you know that, but if you don't know that, then you're derelict of duty. Because that scene, that event is sowing chaos. And then on top of that, which you haven't resolved, neither have you, Holt. We've got another one two weeks later. Where in the crime scene investigation, I personally witnessed the vice president of the FOP.
Corruption.
In the middle of the investigation.
Middle of it. A lobbyist group.
And I'm yelling it. And you know what the cops say? Oh, he's an employee of the city. No, he's not. Did you look into that? The FOP? The purveyor of propaganda?
Mr. Eddie, you're at time.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that, and I appreciate it.
All right. That concludes the consent docket. We can now, uh, consider the remaining items other than the one that was already approved and the one that was already struck. Is there a motion?
I can move the consent docket.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. That brings us to the concurrence docket, item eight. We have items A through F we can take with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine, items requiring separate votes, we're on page nine of your printed agenda. We have ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. We have item 9A1. This is at 2820 General Pershing Boulevard, going from I-2 to R-4. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, um, I believe, uh, the representative for the applicant is available. Could you come speak to this item and, um, what your client intends to do?
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Uh, so this is an application from I-1 to R-4. Uh, it will provide some workforce housing. It's along, uh, General Pershing and, and May Avenue. Uh, it's approximately a $40 million project that will have 100% affordability at the 60% AMI. It, it was recommended unanimously for approval by Planning Commission. It is in the urban high comp plan designation, so it is in compatibility with, uh, the comprehensive plan, and staff did recommend approval. Um, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Appreciate that. Um, I don't have, I got a chance to meet with the applicant, and I'm looking forward to this project taking place in the ward. Um, and if there are no other questions, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Item 9A2 was previously deferred. That brings us to item 9B. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval to close the portion of the east-west utility easement at 5304 Northwest 158th Street. Councilman Stone cipher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's to close a 90 feet, uh, 90 feet of an easement. Uh, it went through Planning Commission with approval. Uh, there are no protests, so at this time I'd move, uh, for the item's approval, please.
I've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9C is an ordinance on final hearing relating to personnel and retirement systems. This was the one we heard about a couple of meetings ago, changing the terminology of, uh, our Personnel Department to, uh, Human Resources.
Right.
And we had a public hearing at the last meeting, and today is potential final consideration. What does the council wish to do with the ordinance?
Got him for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 9D, this is an ordinance on final hearing removing the two-hour time-limited parking on the east side of North Broadway from approximately 45 feet north to 110 feet north of the North Curb Line of Northwest 4th Street. Uh, Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, um, I'm actually rather excited about this item. Um, as we know, we've had long conversations about, uh, parking, uh, cars being parked along the streetcar route being an issue, and, um, especially with, this is right in front of, um, a restaurant, so they, they're happy about this potential change and, um, changing it to a loading zone to allow for, um, you know, pickup of food and, and dropping off of, of supplies and those sorts of things. So I will motion for approval.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E and F are related to the Adventure District Business Improvement District. Uh, we had a previous presentation on this. Uh, item 9E1 is the public hearing regarding the Adventure District Business Improvement District. Uh, it's number, assessment district number nine. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing? They have not, so we will close the public hearing and move to 9E2, uh, the resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Adventure District Business Improvement Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F is an ordinance on final hearing adopting and setting the assessment role for year 2021 for the Adventure District Business Improvement District, et cetera. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G is ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency today relating to fire prevention and protection, amending the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, et cetera, removing the fee required to secure a burn permit. I believe we have a quick presentation.
Yes, Chick Kelly is here to speak to this item. We had a question a few weeks ago when we were talking about debris removal, about fees on debris, burning debris in larger, on larger properties. And, um, the department actually looked at that question as well as just looked at it more broadly. I'll let the chief, uh, give us a presentation on what the recommendation is today.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Richard Kelly, the Fire Chief. We have been looking at this ordinance, um, prior to this, but also it's been concerns coming from council. We wanted to make sure that we looked at this in detail. And what we, uh, looking at the current ordinance that we do have in place already, it does address RA and AA zoning, but we felt there was an area that was missed, and we wanted to really look into that. And what we're able to look at is what some of the areas we've seen was the R1 areas that were not being included in that. And then we started looking at the size of the property we felt that would need to take place, where we could meet the requirements of the, uh, of the ordinance. Because we're still keeping in place the required to get a permit, and they also have some requirements that's in the ordinance that they have to have in place where we can burn safely and effectively. We recognize there's a lot of vegetation out there. We not only believe this is important to address the issues we're dealing with, the ice storm, we also, it's very important going forward that we address the issues dealing with our wildland urban interface and a lot of our rural areas. So we, we believe it's important to look at that. So we, what we changed in, what we're recommending, the change in the ordinance, that we'd increase it to residential properties that are one acre or greater, as long as they meet all the requirements. And the requirements that we're looking at, they still have to get a permit. And the reason we looked at the one acre is, they must have a burn pile, must be 500 feet from any occupied residence other than those located on the property on which, uh, they're burning on, and shall not be located any closer than 150 feet from any other structure. So we felt that one acre was a good compromise. It would be a safe size that we can meet it, and we'd be able to add that R1 into the zoning. So it would still include the AA and RA areas that are one acre or greater, but it'd also bring into the R1 or those RA2 areas. So we felt it was all inclusive in that, and it helps contribute to the decline or the reduce, uh, reduction of the fuel loads in those areas. So I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
Can you, can you speak to, I, I've never burned things, except for like when I've gone camping. Um, but I did read something recently, and I'd be curious if you could speak to it about, like, the amount of time, especially the debris from the storm, that you need to let it sit before you burn it because of potential hazards of like the, the sap and other things that you're burning? Can you speak to that?
There, there's not really any concern as far as the length of time. The main concern is how close it is to vegetation, to other areas, to structures. We actually go out and look at every one of them before we approve it, so we make sure that they have all the fuel around that in a, in a safe manner, where we're not gonna see that spread. There's also wind speed and weather conditions they have to meet. So it's, you know, it's, it's very refined on how we look at that process. So there's not really a length of time, but we also make sure it has to be vegetation. They can't throw trash and debris in that. So we're very particular in that area, but that's also what contributes to our wildland urban interface fuel loads. So it's very important we reduce that, not only during, after the ice storm, but for continuous operations throughout the year.
I just want to say thank you all, because I know, especially in the ward I serve, it's very rural, so this was a concern for a lot of our residents after, uh, the ice storm. Um, my question, and I know, I'm sure you all may probably be in the process, but as we move this, um, is it possible for our fire prevention office to maybe do some type of education for our community to understand these changes and those who may qualify, and even the steps that they'll need, uh, to obtain the permit, or just get someone to come look to see if they, they can, uh, be a part of, of what this entails?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this, there will be an education piece to this. We recognize there's gonna be some changes, those that may not understand. You still have to acquire a permit, what requirements there are in place to meet that. So we'll make sure we do an education piece along with that. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Well, what does the council want to do with the proposed ordinance? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes as soon as you have that opportunity. Passes unanimously, and I believe that, uh, it is also hoped for that we would pass an emergency. So is there a motion for that? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 9H is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing January 5th and final hearing on January 19th relating to animals, amending Chapter 8 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, related to reclamation of impounded animals, et cetera. Uh, as, as stated, and as is our typical procedure with ordinance changes, this will be a, a three-meeting cycle with today's merely being introduction and a little bit of explanation. So do we have a presentation?
Yes. John Gary is here with Animal Welfare Division. He's their Animal Welfare Superintendent, does a great job in leading the organization. I appreciate that. And this is just something to help them better serve, um, the community and the way that they deal with, um, animals with, uh, animals that have been either abandoned, or if they're dealing with issues with nicalactin. So John, I'll let you give us a presentation on the proposal.
Yeah, really, it's a, it's just a simple ordinance change to address when owners fail to appear once the animal's been impounded and, and is at the shelter, uh, for our cruelty cases. Currently, uh, the way the ordinance reads, if, if the owner is, if we take the animal on a cruelty case, and the animal's there in the shelter, and then the owner fails to appear for court, the animal just languishes in the shelter, just stays there, um, for months, um, waiting for the owner to either, one, finally come forward, or two, get picked up on a warrant, and we finally get to have the court case. So we are proposing this ordinance to change that to where if the owner fails to appear for their court date, then it's considered abandonment to the animal, and then we can then place the animal. Um, some of these, we currently have five cases of this right now in the shelter where animals have, are sitting there, um, and, and some, a few of them are four or five months old, um, that the animal has just been sitting in the shelter, hoping that somehow the owner is found. So this ordinance would address that and allow us to get these animals placed and get them out of shelters. As good as our staff does at caring for the animals, the shelter is no place for an animal to be for that amount of time. So, um, that's really all the ordinance is, to address that, that abandonment of the animal when the owner fails to appear for court.
All right. Any questions?
John?
Want to move introduction?
Is it on? Is my mic on? Okay. Um, not necessarily just related to the ordinance, but your description, which I appreciate, reminds me of when I took that tour of the facility a year ago, and in anticipation of, um, Maps 4, and I just wanted to applaud you all for, um, some of the holiday, uh, social media that you all are doing right now, particularly as it relates to those. And anyone listening to this, please pass this along. Medium-sized dogs, would you speak to the need, uh, what's facing dogs here, that kind of medium build, and why those are the ones we need to be focusing on, trying to make sure that folk know that, you know, they need a home? Could you just kind of speak to that?
Well... Well, the, the, the most at-risk animals in our shelter are medium to large breed dogs. The, most of them are mixed breed, a lot of pit bull mixes, those type. And so we, we have to, those are the ones we have to promote. The small dogs they leave, the puppies they leave, but these bigger dogs, they need people that, you know, there's a little more that goes to care of them and they, they need more exercise, even other things. And so that's what we've done recently is try to promote those. You know, we've had, despite COVID, we've had a record year of animal welfare. We're on pace to finish with an 89% live release rate with our goals of 90. So we had to start focusing in on the most at-risk animals and, and that's really what that's about. And you'll see more of that as we continue to do that. We work with a couple of national groups also to try to address that situation.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And anybody watching at home or anybody here in attendance today, spread the word that those medium and large-sized dogs are the most at risk. And anything we can do to help find them a home is just, is just critical, particularly as we're heading, you know, in this winter time. But I just wanted to applaud the social media that I'm seeing around dogs of that particular size. If you haven't seen it, go onto Instagram and just see all these, I mean, your heart will just melt just seeing the, the Christmas-themed marketing that you all are doing. I had seen one of Councilwoman Hammond's Instagram stories and I, I was just, then, then I just disappeared over to your page. I was like, oh my God. But just please spread that word. That is a big, important thing. And I just wanted to thank you all again for, for your work on that. So.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Do we want to entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance for its further consideration? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item nine I is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Nice, would you like to address item A?
I want to ask Mr. Chad, I know I asked him, my, my folks to reach out to you. So hopefully they did by this morning.
I could see that they called earlier this morning, but I haven't been able to reach them yet.
Okay. Well, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask that we, one, one more time. This is my last time to ask for this because I did tell them that this is very important, that we take care of these issues. So I will ask that we defer one, once more, item one, I one A and item I one D as in dog.
Okay.
That's correct. We're not going to be presenting at our next council meeting. So I'd like to push that out a little further also to the January 19th meeting, if possible. Give that a little bit more time.
Time for them to get this taken care of. So thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to defer those two items as stated to the January 19th council meeting. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're back on the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak on this, regarding these dilapidated structures. So we would entertain the motion to pass the resolution found at nine I two declaring that the structures are dilapidated except for those previously deferred. Got a motion? Is that in a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to nine J one, the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. No one has signed up to speak under this public hearing. So we'll move to the item at nine J two, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion in a second to adopt the resolution. Cast your votes. Soon as you can. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at nine K one. And item G is the same item that we just deferred under item I. And so Councilwoman, would you like to do that here as well?
Yes, I would like to defer that item, item K one G until the 19th of January.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to that effect. Cast your votes when you can. Passes unanimously. That brings us back to nine K one, the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those that were struck or deferred. No one has signed up to speak under this public hearing. So we'll go to nine K two, which is the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Is there a motion? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we are at nine L one and two. These items are related. Nine L one is the public hearing regarding the five-year capital improvement plan. No one has signed up to speak under that public hearing. So we will proceed to nine L two, the resolution adopting the five-year capital improvement plan. We did have some previous presentations, but I think, Mr. City Manager, you wanted to give a refresher before we vote.
Yeah, just give an overview here. We had a, we had an introduction of this item a few weeks ago, had presentations by several of the departments. And I just wanted Doug just to give us a high-level overview here of what's in the plan.
Right. So Mayor and Council, Doug Dowler, Assistant Finance Director and Budget Director. There's been quite a process that's been followed to bring this plan before you here. Back in the beginning of this calendar year, we began, departments began preparing the projects that they saw coming in over the next five years during the spring and summer. Those various boards, trusts and commissions that oversee those areas approve those projects that are in that area of the plan. Earlier in the fall here, the project, the whole plan was submitted to the Planning Commission for review and approval. They had recommended that. And so on November 24th, the plan was introduced to council. We've had presentations by airports, parks, utilities and public works, and now it's being considered for adoption. Just by, within the plan, it's $2.9 billion in total of projects. 1.7 billion of that is from utilities, 585 million is from GO bonds and $361 million from sales tax. And just to reiterate again, this does not include the MAPS four projects because the order of the projects has not been established yet. So we didn't know what was going to be included in the next five years. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the five-year capital improvement plan.
Any questions for Doug?
Doug, or maybe City Manager, I'm not sure. And this might sound like the biggest dumb-dumb question there is, but when it comes to like the general fund and like public works projects, like, you know, street improvements, residential or material. So I've always been so focused on the, the bonds as a revenue source and thinking about MAPS four. But how does it work in terms of the general fund itself? Like as we're collecting sales tax revenue, how do we decide which projects receive resurfacing or new sidewalks or drainage? Like, is it always just relegated to the, the bond?
Typically, typically it's in the bond funds. It's either bonds or like Better Streets, it's other funding sources. General fund is used more for maintenance-type projects, you know, we're doing pothole repairs. We're doing repairs and maintenance. The actual capital projects are typically through the bond funds or the Better Streets Safer City Program.
Just wanted to make sure I was hearing.
Yes, you're right. You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions for Doug? All right. So we have the item nine L two, the resolution. Is there a motion? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine M was previously deferred to January 5th, which brings us to item nine N, which is the resolution to reestablish the Small and Disadvantaged Local Business Utilization Program to promote and encourage the use of small and disadvantaged local business subcontractors on public construction contracts.
Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, gave us a presentation on this program to help us to be more proactive in reaching out to small and disadvantaged businesses to give them opportunities to do business with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present to you today the, the reestablishment of the Local Business Utilization Program for Oklahoma City. Got a PowerPoint that we'll go through that will show you some of the history, show you what we've already prepared to date, but then show you some of the work that would come forward should the council adopt the resolution today. My appreciation goes to staff that did a lot of research and pulling up some of the previous program information. This includes Patty Bootenhoff and Jose Lemos who work in our contracts and our prequal divisions. And so a lot of the information today comes from them. But we've also worked very closely with other city departments as I move forward. We work very closely with utilities, the MAPS office, M Bark and also airports. For those that may recall, we actually established the first local business utilization program in 1995. And this followed the original MAPS one program being established. And there was a consensus of the council at that time with these very large MAPS projects coming on board. They really wanted to focus on awarding as many contracts to local businesses as possible, but then also try to establish relationships with disadvantaged businesses. Again, local, with the fear that a lot of those large contracts may have gone out of state. And so the program was established. It used a number of tools. There was an outreach program. There was also a database that was developed that, that logged all the different contractors and subcontractors that were available. We did additional outreach. And then there's a lot of reporting that came to the city council to just show the status and the usage. From those reports back in, in 95, there was about a 90% utilization rate. So they definitely solved the, did all the contracts go out of state? No, they did not. The majority of the contracts did stay local. And there are a lot of small businesses that were, were part of that program. There were two additional programs that followed that original program by MAPS one. It was reestablished for the MAPS for Kids program, which was the schools work done with Oklahoma City Public Schools and also the different suburban school districts. It was introduced in 2003. And upon completion of the MAPS for Kids program, the 2008 program was established to be a citywide program. But these two programs were not nearly as robust as the first MAPS. The database was maintained. There was a level of reporting that was done to the council. There wasn't quite as much outreach. The projects were smaller. We just did not see that there was as much need. And there just wasn't as much inquiry at that time. So it has slowly been lessened over the several years. But today, we have researched all those three original programs. I know that we've collected some input from you as council. And so we're pleased to present, you should have in your packet, an outline of what we're proposing is the, the new Small Disadvantaged Local Business Utilization Program, predominantly to follow the passage of the 2017 bond, the 2017 sales tax, also the MAPS four program. But then there's a number of utilities, M Bark and other projects citywide that could take advantage of it as well. When we look at the components of the plan, and we're looking to enhance, this would be committing to new opportunities, generating a strong pool of local small disadvantaged contracts and businesses, promoting participation. This would include encouraging larger prime contractors to engage smaller local subcontractors, contributing to the economic growth and development of these small businesses, and then also establishing this new program that meets the intent of the city council. The document that you have, this is just an excerpt of some of those pages. And again, as we work through this, as we talk about the overview and the work today, as we establish... Hope that wasn't me. Can you still hear me? We good? Okay. Let me restart with the overview. So as we establish the local businesses, what we want to do is do an outreach program that, again, as we work with the businesses that would participate on these city programs, talking more about the bidding process, the contracting process, all the different opportunities that we have available with the city. We had identify a liaison with the city. We do not have that person identified at this point, that we'd have a central point of contact so that we could work very closely with the other departments and also with those businesses that are participating. We're going to actively encourage through workshops and other means to try to reach out. Again, publishing those opportunities, making sure that information is readily available, whether that be through phone call, website or other opportunities. And then we want to reestablish those periodic reports that would come to the city council and that will report on that progress. So there's really three components. There's the outreach program. Again, we have not fully vetted all the opportunities that that outreach might contain. Mentioned a few. The resource management, a lot of these would be online resources, things where you could electronically apply, things where you could look up those opportunities on the city's website. But again, maintaining that we've got that phone call and just a person you can get in contact with should you have some questions. And then the database that I mentioned as well. The database, going to the next slide, would include the opportunity then to do the monitoring program where we could work individually with contractors and businesses. And then the reporting to the city council on the percentages of work performed and the number of applicants that we're receiving. This is just an example of a registration form that we could potentially use. We would collect as much information as an applicant would be readily willing to submit. But the idea would be is it would collect not only just their contact information, but their local information. Are they a local contractor? Are they in-state, out-of-state? So that we could provide those reports to the council. It would also report on their status. If they're choosing to submit their status as a disadvantaged business enterprise, we could track on that ability and how many of those contracts are going to disadvantaged businesses. But then also the type of work that they perform. And that would help us do a lot of the matching, the liaison assistance, making sure that as contractors are doing work on certain projects, that we're able to match them with local, small or other contractors. So as next steps, if council were to adopt the resolution today, we would move forward to start begin identifying staff and that liaison to lead the program. And we would start the process of establishing that database. It would be an electronic city database that would maintain that information. Start looking at contact numbers and information, updating the contracting requirements as we start and get ready to send our bidding information out. Again, this would be multiple departments. This would not just be public works, but other departments like utilities, M Bark and the MAPS office. And then beginning to develop those reports then back to the city council as we proceed. So with that, I think we've done a lot of the initial work. There's definitely upon adoption of this resolution today, there's a lot of work that we would continue with in the spring as we solidify the program. But we're encouraged to bring this to you today and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Just a couple of questions. On your section entitled "Next Steps," one of the things I want to make sure we're doing is we're reaching out to our local contractors associations and having their involvement, their input, their ideas, and, and report back to us what they think about this and, and what their input is. The second thing is the 1995 Local Business Utilization Program, which was pretty popular. What happened to that? Did it have a sunset provision on it? Was it challenged in any way legally or otherwise? Why did it go away?
Only having been in Oklahoma City and as a project manager at that time, I'll comment just personally. I think we found that there was just larger projects like MAPS were not as a part of the MAPS for Kids program. Now, there were large school projects. And so we did adapt that program for MAPS for Kids. We did a lot of MAPS for Kids reporting to the MAPS for Kids Trust and the school district, but it just really didn't follow into the city projects. It was really focused on just the MAPS for Kids. So what happened after MAPS for Kids was completed, we did try to reestablish a citywide program, but at that time there was just less interest. And so it just didn't come out as strongly as we would present to you today. So our focus would be to take the best parts of all those previous programs, reintroduce that back to the community and then move it forward.
What we're going to try to do is look at the 1995 program, use the positives from it and work on the negatives.
And what we learned out of the first program into MAPS for Kids was that there was just a lot of efficiencies that we were able to use in the MAPS for Kids program. The computer technology was better. The tracking was a lot better than it was in 95, just the launch and technology. I think we're going to be able to experience that even more this time, not just with databases, but just with other capabilities of being able to reach out. I think just the smartphone's going to give a lot more access to contractors, small and large, to be a part of that, and not just rely on things that come to the city council through a paper council packet or something that is a little bit harder to find on a website.
Eric, one, just thanks for bringing this forward. I'm excited about it. So is this something that develops a pool from which to draw subcontractors? Or are we looking mainly at them being a GC?
I would say predominantly on the larger projects focuses on the subcontractors. One of the things that's really difficult that we found in the original programs is it's almost impossible to take a small contractor and get their bonding capacity up to a level for a larger project. But let's realize on MAPS four, there's a lot of smaller contracting opportunities with the sidewalks and the trails and some of the smaller projects. They're not all super huge projects. So we're going to be able to, I think, both encourage small contractors to be prime, but then also on the larger projects, encourage the prime contractors to hire the local small contractors as well.
Cool. Thank you.
I just, I would like to say thank you for this. I know this is something that a lot of us have been asking for in order for us to really feel comfortable with, with what is going to take place in our communities pertaining to MAPS four and also pertaining to a new, I won't say a newfound, but a lot of those smaller businesses that truly, because of what's taking place this year, have been at a disadvantage. And those And those who now probably because of layoffs have had to find a new type of career in getting to something such as this in order for them to provide for their families. So, it's very important for this program to be reestablished, and I am thank, I thank you for that. And I thank our city staff for being very intentional about how we implement this program. And now, my other ask for this is that we continue to get in front of, especially, I would say for the folks that I serve, our communities of color when it comes to our churches, when it comes to those community groups, when it just comes to even sorority, fraternity meetings, just places that we probably usually would not be. And I know it's going to be harder for even myself to reengage like I usually do in open meetings. So, it's, I'm just trying to figure out even for me how to reengage and educate our communities. So, I know that has to be different in a lot of aspects. So, if there's anything that I personally can do to help in this effort of education, please do not hesitate to let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Eric, I really want to commend you and your staff for this work as well. Like, I think this is super cool. And I want to echo what Councilman Stonecifer was saying and Nice in terms of just making sure that we're talking to those contract contractor groups. But I know we're just not formulating what the outreach is going to look like, so this is not a critique. It's just kind of throwing some ideas out there. But labor groups, the contracting groups, as you were presenting, I also thought of our career in metro tech system and the high schoolers, but like, just really letting folk know in those areas. And same what Nikki said, like, just feel free to reach out however you feel I can be useful in promoting that, this program as well. But off the top of my head, the career techs, the metro techs, the labor groups, the contractors that really stands out to me. I suspect Todd's got some ideas too. But yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate Eric's leadership in this, and I know that David and Chris weighed in on it as well. Chris Browning and David Todd weighed in on it as well. And so, I appreciate your leadership in development of this and bringing this forward.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, what's the council want to do with the resolution at 9:00 N. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 901 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Alan Hedge while he continues to require rehabilitation. Don't believe we need executive session.
Leave the item.
Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Howard Henderson while he continues to require rehabilitation. Don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. We have items A through E we can take with one motion. Don't believe we need executive session.
Move the items for approval.
Got a motion? Is there a second? And a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Items from council now. Item 11. 11A is a resolution in support of mask-up OKC and encouraging businesses to require masks and social distancing. Counsel Person Hammond.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to bring this forward. I have, throughout the last few months, been sent videos, pictures of restaurants, sorry, restaurants, event centers, just not supporting or putting in place any, and I'm going to say physical distancing. I just want to make that note because I know that social distancing is like the public health term, but especially as a mental health person, like, we need to physically distance, but stay socially connected. So, I want to say physical distancing. But, and I recognize that a lot of our businesses, those restaurants, those event centers are struggling right now. But I know there are also a lot of those businesses that I patronize that are really trying to, in my mind, and sort of the best practices from our public health officials, you know, do things as safely and with little risk as possible to both their staff as well as the people going to their businesses. So, just recognizing, I believe as of this morning, or sorry, last night, receiving information from our Office of Emergency Management, we've had 2,218 deaths in Oklahoma from COVID-19 and just shy of 400 in our county. And so, our City County Health Department is doing some creative and sort of, you know, public, like, media campaigns, especially for the holidays. And I know this is a time where I'll usually like go stay with my family, you know, my parents for a few days, and my brother comes in from out of state, and it's hard to miss those things. It's hard to miss the work parties and the other gatherings, the New Year's Eve parties. But I think really, we need to recognize that we can only keep our, or actually move our case numbers down and turn those deaths and hospitalizations collectively. So, this is just to support what Oklahoma City County Health Department is doing and really asking our businesses to think creatively about how they can still provide their services, but in the least risky ways possible, as well as our residents to think about how they can celebrate the holidays in ways that are less risky to transmit or get COVID-19. And of course, we know wearing masks and physical distancing are two of those. Physical distancing includes virtual calls, you know, phone calls. You know, my family on Christmas morning, we're going to hop on Zoom and open presents together, but we're all going to be in our respective places. You know, we heard from the Arts Council that they're hosting a virtual event for New Year's Eve. There's just lots of opportunities to still celebrate, to connect socially, but really keep each other safe. And especially, you know, both Councilman Stonecifer and Councilwoman Nice mentioned some residents that we lost from Oklahoma City that were really influential. And I, since then, I have heard of multiple friends of mine who have lost family members to COVID. And just recognizing that, you know, the economy and the virus are not separate. Not only can we not get a stronger economy back until we can really fight the virus, which we're getting, you know, we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, if you will, but that we have to recognize that that loss of life and health for people is also an economic issue. Losing 2,000, over 2,000 people in our state is an economic issue. So, that's why I wanted to bring this forward and just really encourage and promote our residents to follow those best practice guidelines, think creatively about how to celebrate the holidays. And, you know, if you see those campaigns that the City County Health Department is sharing, share them with your friends, you know, really take those seriously and just remember that there are ways that we can collectively address this. And again, with, you know, you can always report mask violations to the city through the Action Center, but those physical distancing practices, you know, that really is on us collectively to practice and enforce with one another. So, I would just ask for us to approve this item, and I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution found at 11A. Cast your votes as soon as you're able. There you go.
I have to speak on that?
Did you fill out a slip on this?
Sorry.
Francis, did we get a?
Christopher.
Okay. Come forward while I look for it. Sorry, you might have gotten caught up in a different pile. Okay. I'm going to, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, COVID is the number one killer of people in America. It surpassed heart disease, I believe, a month ago. And I wanted to give some advice for when this comes around and we extend it. I think that that's the one solid thing that you all have done. I really think, but it needs to go further. There are way too many exemptions. For one, during the city council meeting, I actually called the police on Commissioner Kevin Calvi and Brian Mon, because I was under the assumption that they were violating the mask ordinance. I did, I spoke with the county health department. I reported it, as you said, reported to. They said that, well, check the exemptions. And essentially, if you're in a government building, you don't have to wear a mask. And this virus doesn't care if you're Republican, Democrat, rich or poor. It doesn't care if there are walls blocking it, okay? It's a biological entity. It doesn't care who you are. It will kill you. It doesn't, all of a sudden, government buildings don't have a magical force field. They don't. So, I would ask that all the exemptions be completely dropped because, you know, I even noticed one of the ones of deaf or hard in hearing. I'm hard at hearing. It's one of my disabilities. I still bring the mask down and listen real quick, might say something and put it back, you know? We don't have to have an exemption because then that opens up the door for everybody to say, I have some exemption. And this has become political, as we know. The biological meaning of life is simple, to reproduce and continue the species. That's it. There's no philosophy behind that. And this virus does that. It kills. That's its job. Dr. Fauci and others stated that this is the most efficient virus that's ever hit mankind on record. It's efficient. It reproduces like that. And we have known since 1919, 1919, it's over 100 years ago, that was the Spanish Flu, that masks help stop the spread of airborne viruses. It helps. Okay? That's a long time ago. In 1870, Joseph Lister helped create sanitation guidelines that we use today. So, we've known the science for an extremely long time. Facts are not a liberal conspiracy. Again, it doesn't care if you're a Trumper. It doesn't care if you're a Democrat. This thing will kill you. And in fact, the people who violate the guidelines, you're at a higher risk of dying. So, I just really want to say that we'll really look into tightening things up because even though that we have a vaccine that's coming, they're predicting it's going to be going into the summer, into the fall of next year before we really can maybe start to take the masks off, maybe. And let's stop trying to outsmart the facts. No one's smarter than the facts. And that means tightening up too. Again, during protests, we've seen police smiling at us, coughing at us, when they pepper sprayed women, children, because of those exemptions and not being able to hold folks accountable. So, please close those up, and let's keep masking up. Make it stronger. Let's protect people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We already had the vote open, so why don't we go ahead? And I assume everyone's cast ears, close that out. Passes six to three. Okay. Now, we have item 11B. This is a resolution declaring an extension to December 31, 2021, of the penalty reduction program that began July 1, 2019, for defendants with cases and warrant status for Class A offenses that occurred prior to December 31, 2018. This resolution is brought forward by the Judiciary Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Stonecifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee's had some conversations, basically trying to come up with a definitive date that's best suits this resolution. And I think after several discussions, we are more comfortable at this time making the expiration date on June 30 of 2020. So, I'm going to first make a motion to amend the resolution. And with that thought in mind, after we see our numbers, come back and revisit that a couple of weeks before June 30 for extending it farther into the future. But I would say this, the reason that we are extending it is that as of last week, we have over 3,006 warrants and fines that have been taken care of. A side note to that is because of that, we've collected over $340,000. And so, the point is, this has worked. The pandemic has slowed it down, and so, that's why we decided to continue it. And this time, I'd move to amend the resolution to an extension up to, or through, June 30, 2021, please.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on an amendment to the resolution. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are back on the resolution as amended.
Now, I'd move the amended resolution.
Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes.
I don't think, Cindy, we don't, or Kenny, we don't need an emergency with this, do we? Okay.
Passes unanimously. All right. Now, we are on 11C. This, okay, I want to be clear about where this is procedurally because that can be confusing if you haven't dealt with one of these before. This is not even being introduced today. This is, and Councilman Greiner will explain it here in a moment, but I just wanted to address the procedure. We are considering the potential of referring his proposal to the Planning Commission for its comment, following that, however long that takes, and I'm not really familiar with that timeline. But however long that would take, it would come back to council for potential introduction, which would then start the three-meeting cycle that we're used to when we amend ordinances. So, this is far from the final vote. It is not even the introduction of the concept. It is merely to refer it to the Planning Commission for its thoughts. And of course, it is open to amendment all along the process, and many ordinances have been through the years. And with that, Councilman Greiner, feel free to explain this ordinance proposal, which relates to zoning and planning code, amending Chapter 59. This is regarding medical marijuana.
I was actually looking forward to you reading the entire summary and saying, "Medical marijuana doesn't..." But yeah, Mayor is correct. I kind of am viewing this as kind of step two in a really long process. Now, staff probably would disagree that this is only step two because they've done a ton of work right now. And the only reason my name is on it is because I was the only dumb one that told Aubrey yes, to put my name on it. So, that's, I do think this is definitely needed or something like this is needed. And so, really, the purpose is just to better regulate the medical marijuana industry because right now, really, we don't regulate it at all. There's no definition. There's no...
[shout] Ball! 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 At that time, Oklahoma City decided that we had similar use units for agriculture, processing, retail sales and services, that medical marijuana would fall under those. So I think Councilman Griner's comment that we don't regulate it means that it's just regulated as if any other industrial processing or retail sales and service use would be. What we're proposing as a framework for this ordinance is to mirror how other cities regulate medical marijuana in creating a distinct and separate use unit for medical marijuana. We have separate use units for all kinds of other uses in our zoning code, so we would be proposing creating a framework so that we could consider potential land use impacts and compatibility issues with those use units specific to medical marijuana growing operations, processing facilities, research facilities, and dispensaries. So this ordinance sets up that framework by calling them out distinctly by those uses and assigning them to the different zoning districts in which they would be permitted. The ordinance before you classifies those into the same zoning districts that they're currently allowed, so it doesn't restrict any medical marijuana uses from where they currently are allowed to operate. But what it does do is it establishes conditions for operations of those facilities. And those conditions were borrowed from the city of Tulsa, and I'll just kind of highlight what they are. One is a prohibition of drive-through windows and drive-through lanes for any medical marijuana-related use. One is requiring a minimum 1,000-foot separation between dispensaries, requiring that growing operations be set back at least 1,000 feet from neighboring residential districts, and that all medical marijuana uses occur entirely within enclosed buildings with security systems, surveillance cameras, and ventilation to control odors.
(audience clapping) Guys, you'll be removed if you don't settle down. You will all get to speak, you all get to speak. You get to come right to that podium and speak.
So this ordinance, this ordinance mirrors what the city of Tulsa already requires and has had in place for several years. And as Councilman Griner stated, this proposal allows for lots of different steps in the process. So referring it to the Planning Commission, the standard process is the Planning Commission would hold an urban development committee meeting, which is an open, public meeting to receive input from the industry, from community members, to balance interests, to consider this proposal, and then to take that proposal forward with the input of everybody involved. Then the Planning Commission would hold two meetings, one an introduction and one a public hearing. So if the Planning Commission so chooses to hold multiple urban development committee meetings to receive more input, or to have focus groups, and to dig down into issues, they can do that. So there is a potential that through the Planning Commission process, there could be four or five public hearings. Then Planning Commission would recommend a proposed ordinance back to city council for consideration, and there would be three meetings of city council that would be open, public meetings for further discussion and deliberation on the issue. So on this action, it would be referred to Planning Commission, and they would start that process, and I would assume in January, that schedule would be set. If you have any questions about the process or the proposal today, I'm happy to answer them in our municipal councillor's office, and zoning and subdivision manager is also here, too.
So I know right now, we don't have the provision for virtual open meetings. Maybe that will change by next month, maybe not. But I would be curious, is there an opportunity, because just thinking about when planning meetings happen, and even if they're able to schedule some that are off-cycle, you know, just opportunity for as many industry folks, you know, whoever, business owners, whoever, to have that input? Are there opportunities, like you said, those focus groups? Could those be done virtually to allow for more flexibility of people attending, or do those have to be public meetings so that they would have to be in person?
No, focus group meetings don't have the legal requirements, because it's not an official meeting that has to be advertised and have a quorum. So the Planning Department can do all kinds of outreach, and subdivision and zoning office can figure out how to get information through all different means. They can receive information on emails, they can do, you know, virtual meetings as focus groups, and I think with the amount of interest in this topic, that that would be an appropriate step.
Because that's, my concern is just with being able to have as many people giving input and access, that there are opportunities for that virtual interaction as well. One other question I had, I was alerted that Tulsa actually just struck their drive-through item, and I was curious, that seems rather new, apparently, in just like the last couple of weeks. Were we aware of that, and does that factor into what's...
Yep, I just found out yesterday that a council member in Tulsa has requested that Planning Commission remove the drive-through restriction because of safety concerns due to COVID. So their Planning Commission is going to be considering that change to their ordinance. And like I said, we wanted a starting point for a discussion on a framework, and we borrowed provisions from the city of Tulsa, which had been in place for a long time with the drive-throughs, and, you know, that very well may be something taken under consideration by this group through the process.
Yeah, and one of the other issues I heard was the 1,000-foot buffer from residential has been, is, in this, in our ordinance right now, it applies to all zoning uses, and I think that that could easily be changed into only restricting it just to agriculture, or, you know, because it doesn't make sense in a more urbanized, dense area. But, you know, these are all details that I think that we, the process will work those details out, so.
So, I guess for me personally, I mean, I understand the process, I think it's a good process. Kind of like I said yesterday, I still would prefer that we defer this for a minimum 30 days, just because of the holidays, because I want to reach out to those affected personally. And believe me, I'm more guilty than anyone of steamrolling ahead, but I want to reach out to the industry folks that are affected personally, to understand what their thoughts are, so that when we do get ready to, hopefully here in 30 days, send it to the Planning Commission, we know that we have some basis of something that we think will kind of work from both sides. I mean, that's my hope. So I understand that we can slow it down 30, 35 days, or something like that, but I would rather see us send something to Planning Commission that, you know, hopefully doesn't just blow the whole thing up once it gets there in their lap.
Is that a motion, Todd?
Well, may I add something, Mayor?
Sure.
I agree with Councilman Stone. I feel that if I send this to Planning Commission as it is, that I'm gonna have to deal with a lot of explaining that there are these opportunities, and I just think there's so much confusion around this, particularly because now of what Tulsa's done with the drive-through possibility, that I would prefer Councilman Stone's process in terms of, you know, deferring it, and during that deferral period, having those interactions with members of the industry. You know, I've had, as many of us on council, I think maybe all of us, have had some interaction with someone who wanted to do a grow facility, a dispensary, and through negotiations, we were able to make sure that there were things that provided safety to the business owner in terms of security cameras. Sometimes it was about doors, like protective doors that protected, that ensured that someone coming into that business or that grow facility wasn't having access to the product, and in terms of being able to rob them and stuff like that. And then at the same time, there are neighbors who support 788, but also have questions about, you know, what safety measures are being taken to protect both the business owner, the product, and the neighborhood. And so for me, that kind of trifecta of conversation that needs to happen between, you know, the business owner and the city and the neighborhoods, I just think is so critical. And I feel, it's just me personally, I feel like if I vote for this today to send it to planning, I'm gonna be spending a lot of time explaining to folk who have a lot of concerns that, you know, it just, it seems convoluted ultimately, the sort of explanations I would have to do. And that's not a knock, by the way, on Councilman Griner at all. That's also not a knock at all toward Aubrey and the planning staff. Like, we've been working with them to try and find out what does need to go in this. I think the biggest one that I'm having the problem with is the drive-through aspect of it, you know, having to explain to people, yeah, that's part of this framework, but it can definitely be amended, and it can be, I understand that. I'm just saying that that is a lot of explanation and a lot of confusion for folk as it is. So I would be with Todd on the idea of deferring it, so that there was that space where the industry had their voice before we sent it to planning, and then even continuing the process that Assistant City Manager McDermid described. So that's where I am. And again, this is not, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, I'm just trying to make sure that this is truly a conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, just to be fair to Councilman Griner, this isn't all Councilman Griner's ideas. We all have put little input, we all have some concerns in this. Seeing it roiled up, rolled up, it brings even more concerns to me. So for that reason, I would make a motion to defer for a minimum of 30 days.
So what would be some options, Francis, for a date?
Mayor, can I ask Aubrey a question?
Sure, go ahead, Dave.
Aubrey, if this were to be approved by, well, first of all, here's the first question. Could this be initiated by the Planning Commission without being approved by the city council?
Yes, Planning Commission or city council can initiate ordinance changes.
Okay, well, so then the second question, if it were approved today, when would be the first time that the Planning Commission could look at the issue?
I would think they would have to identify date with proper notice in probably late January, early February for the first meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. All right, so Todd is making a motion to defer the item to February 2nd. Is there a second on that motion? There is a second from Councilman Cooper. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, cast your votes. You could still, we'll address that in a minute, but we're not considering the item today, so. All right, so the item has been deferred to February 2nd by a vote of seven to two. Now, if people still wish to speak, you're here, you've signed up, we can do that, but understand that we're not voting on this until February.
Sorry, Mayor Holt, I just have a question for Mr. Griner.
All I can control is that you get the chance to speak. Everybody gets to speak, but not all at once. Okay, Blake Cantrell. All I can control is the ability for everyone to have an opportunity to speak.
You continue to show us how you operate without acknowledging your competence.
Please allow me.
Please give Mr. Cantrell the opportunity to speak.
Guys, I'm with the industry on your team. Hi, my name is Blake Cantrell. I'm the CEO of the Peak Dispensary Chain, as well as the president of the Oklahoma Cannabis Industry Association. Excuse me. Here to talk to you all, obviously, about the ordinance that was just deferred. Essentially, this is a massive overreach. For starters, the financial impact report that this, that the city council was presented to consider is basically, excuse me, a fundamental representation of what those costs are. That financial impact report said that the costs to the city, to the citizens, to the industry are zero. That's categorically untrue. Essentially, this will result in massive, excuse me, result in massive, far-reaching costs to the industry. Basically, specifically, I have a few of the provisions that I would like to address. One of them being that the background of the ordinance tells us that the council members were requested to have their staff explore options to address these issues, specifically in reference to Tulsa's ordinances. And this proposed ordinance is effectively a mirror image of the Tulsa ordinance, which is gradually, as we've discussed, being walked back. Specifically, Councilwoman Krista Patrick, and by the way, this repeal of the drive-through specific thing in Tulsa was actually in November. So this council should have been aware of it through the reporting. The Councilwoman Patrick stated that the short of the story is, they found it in some ordinance early on, they thought it would be the right decision, but none of those entities could really see a reason to keep preventing drive-throughs in this day of COVID, when we are promoting curbside pickup, and that is creating a hazard for employees of dispensaries who stand in parking lots and do transactions on a cash basis. This ordinance represents a health risk, not only to the industry and the people that are professionals in it, but also to the greater public. There is no logical sense in eliminating a drive-through option today. Councilwoman Hammond presented the mask-up OKC deal on this exact point, yet we're walking back things that are benefiting the public health. Okay, so there was also a mandate to the staff of this council in preparing this ordinance to take a look at the city of Tulsa. As I said, they are beginning to walk that back. Learn from Tulsa's mistakes, as you guys intended, and don't initiate this to begin with. Tulsa, in fact, is the only municipality in the state that has a drive-through prohibition, and they are actively working to remove it. The air filtration and ventilation regulation basically says that, it sets impossible and subjective standards on the industry. You're essentially asking the cannabis business owner to eliminate odors at the threshold of their business, which is a subjective standard that is impossible to satisfy. Basically, you, Councilman Cooper, Mayor Holt, myself, we all have different sensitivities. How is it that a cannabis company is to be expected to eliminate odor at the threshold of their property line? That's absurd, and unenforceable, and who makes that determination?
Mr. Cantrell, you're over time. Is there a concluding statement?
Final point is the 1,000-foot from residential limit. This does, in fact, prevent cannabis retail businesses from operating in areas of the OKC municipality, which is in direct conflict with Title 63 of the Oklahoma statutes, specifically Chapter 425. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Okay, finally, so basically, it's in contravention to state law. Every single one of these city ordinances that has been presented has been challenged in court, and there is a guarantee that you guys will see litigation resulting from this ordinance. You will. You're inviting the city to be sued and expend time and resources at a time when they're basically impossible to come by, and to what end? Who benefits from this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Stephanie Davis.
So I would ask you all to outright reject it. If not, open it up, consult the industry, come to the OCIA meetings. Councilman Stone, you asked for our input, and I invite you, excuse me, to our meetings. You can reach me at blake@thepeakok.com. I'd be happy to speak with you all. Sorry, come out to OCIA. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephanie Davis.
Mayor, my name is Stephanie Davis. I own a business in Ward Two, which happens to be a retail medical dispensary, and so I just wanted to kind of come and talk to you guys a little bit about this ordinance. Number one, you know, Aubrey said that it's a starting point. One of the major issues that the industry has, and why you see many, many, many people here who had less than 48 hours' notice that this was even going to be presented, showing up, is because none of the industry stakeholders are ever, ever, ever conferred on any of these items. Marijuana is a new industry in Oklahoma, right? We're all learning it, right? Well, guess who knows it the best? The people who work in the industry, okay? None of you guys are in the industry. We want to help educate you. We want to help you to figure out how we can have symbiotic relationships where the city can benefit and marijuana businesses can benefit, right? The fact that Ward One council member, A, couldn't even get here on time, when we have all been sitting here since 8:30 this morning, because this issue is important to us. We have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless hours of our sweat, blood, and tears that not only we put into passing 788 in this state, but also serving it. the patients of Oklahoma who this program was designed for. Oklahoma has the best medical marijuana program in the nation, period. There's no comparison. So my advice to you guys is let us help you help Oklahoma. So please remember that we are already overregulated not only at the federal level, yes, even though it's federally illegal, we still face regulations when it comes to packaging, to labeling, and not to mention the tax codes that we have to deal with, which means that we don't get to deduct any normal trade businesses that a plumber would get to. Secondly, we face regulations at the state level that change this year alone, how many times? Five or six?
Seven, five.
I mean, five or six. We had one change in September, then we just had another change in October. And now, here we go one more time, right? So I just want to remind you that this industry, just in 2020, which we are not even finished with counting, according to OMMA, brought in $51 million in excise tax, okay? Of that, 12.6 million has gone to education. Why do we want to continue to hurt medical marijuana businesses when they are doing so much for the people of Oklahoma? Thank you.
Aaron Dimmitt?
Mayor Holt, members of the City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come today and speak to you about this issue. I know that there's a lot of business owners behind me that have a lot of wonderful things to say. I am a grower here in Oklahoma City. We have had the opportunity to have one of our senators out there, Michael Brooks, to come out and tour our facility to see the work that we're doing because he was interested in educating himself on what was happening in his district. I would implore each of you to do the same. Even if it's not in your district, come out and educate yourselves on what's happening out there. You're going to hear from a lot of other business owners today, and that's great, but I'd like to address this as a patient. We've already talked about the drive-through and the elimination of that. So we don't want to beat that any further, but you've taken such great measures already in the city of Oklahoma City compared to what our state leadership has done to try to help protect us from this pandemic. And I would just once again ask you to please not make it any harder, any worse, by considering removal of the drive-throughs. That just doesn't make any sense. A lot of what's in this proposal is overkill, is overreached, as has already been stated, but you're making it more difficult for patients. Please don't do that. So, Mr. Stone, I appreciate your comments, and Councilmember Cooper, I appreciate your comments as well as wanting to further your education in that. The OMMA does have a registry. For every single business, they are required to provide an email address. When you're talking about holding these hearings and these public meetings, that information was requested by the state. Use that information to communicate with these individuals who would like to be informed and come and speak with you about these matters. Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity today.
Thank you. Richard Dimmitt?
Mayor Holt, Council, pleasure to be here today. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Richard Dimmitt, and I own several small businesses. I actually have owned a small business and worked in Oklahoma for 20-some years now. So I know a little bit about small business, okay? Two years ago, we got into the marijuana, medical marijuana business, and it's a fantastic thing, and we've done it for the right reasons. Overregulation kills us, absolutely kills ma and pa shops every day. We are regulated by OMA through the Department of Health, and believe me, we have plenty of rules and regulations to follow. A lot of those, in what I see in this proposal, I believe, are already out there. Security systems is part of OMA's stuff, okay? We all have it. Why are we wasting our time on this? I think this is the epitome of just government waste here. I would, I want you to understand that last year, our company, our little grow company, went through 12 different inspections by the state. For what benefit? Nothing, really, other than for them to continue to collect their fees. It did nothing for the business, it did nothing for neighbors, it did nothing for the patient, absolutely nothing, okay? We are so strongly opposed to this. It's just a waste of time. It's just an absolute waste of time. So thank you for hearing me today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ronald Durbin?
Councilmembers, my name is Ronald Durbin. I'm an attorney out of Tulsa. I'm incognito today because I don't have to be in front of a black robe. I typically like to not play the role of attorney sometimes. Since this all passed in June, on June 26th of 18, the medical marijuana industry has changed dramatically. We've had cities like Tulsa pass ordinances, and talking in masks is a nightmare. In dealing with the city of Tulsa, we went through a very rigorous and long process. We had to continually go and deal with it. They did the mistake of going through the Planning Commission first, passing all of these things through Planning Commission, coming to the city of Tulsa City Council, and then realizing we didn't really get any kind of input into this. The city of Tulsa, when they passed their ordinances on November 28th of 18, made a lot of mistakes. So why is the city of Tulsa changing? It's really a simple reason for them changing. We took them on a tour. We walked them through dispensaries, processors, grows. We showed them how the industry actually works. And if you've not been through those three things, you have utterly no clue how this industry works. You're regulating something that you don't understand. Are there problems? Absolutely. Are there things you need to take control of? 100%. Are there problems in this industry? Nobody here would deny that. But I know all of them. I know every single person, I think, in this room that's here on medical marijuana. And what I can tell you is, they're pragmatists. They want things to be reasonable, but they want to have input. And I don't want to curse, but there's an old saying that says, when you put something good into something, you get something good out. But if you put something bad into it, you get something bad out. It's a S-word if we're talking about that. The problem is, what you're contemplating doing is putting really bad things into this ordinance. And you're going to go to a Planning Commission to consider all these issues. You were the ones that were elected. You were the ones tasked by the public to be responsible for this. And as I was walking in the building, I noticed a quote on the building. It says, "Dedicated to the people of Oklahoma City and for the perpetuation of good government." I think we could all agree that an informed citizenry is a very important idea of government. It's really important, though, also, that our leaders are educated on these issues. And you're approaching these things and walking into them in an uneducated manner. Currently, we're dealing with a lot of change in the state of Oklahoma. I know of no less than eight separate bills that are going to be proposed in the legislature, most of which, it looks like, are going to pass. So the legislative session, in case you didn't realize, starts in February. So you've now just pushed this issue to the first part of February, when all these bills are going to start getting passed, and now you're going to be going, we're having this meeting, they're passing new laws, and we're going to be talking about things when things are in a constant state of flux. That makes no sense. And I appreciate Councilmen Stone and Cooper really addressing the idea that we need a delay. But my point would be, you need a further delay to step back, take tours, see these businesses in operation, and contemplate what the legislature is going to do. You might not realize it, but you're going to face delivery this legislative session. That's on the agenda. You're going to face new license types. Wholesaler licenses are going to be created. There's all kinds of things that are happening. You've got an expansion of the program to additional people out of state. There's all kinds of things that are coming in this next legislative session. So I'd actually urge you to contemplate pushing this back a little further. I will be happy to set up a tour so we can go through these things. We can do it in a way where we don't violate Open Meetings Act. But that is why the city councilors of the city of Tulsa are taking a second look at things like drive-throughs, where their zoning grows, where their zoning processing facilities that are not engaged in chemical extraction or BHO extraction. They're contemplating all those things because they saw it in action. And those are all things that will help you put something good into something, into the Planning Commission, to get something even better back out of it. So I would urge you to consider pushing this further. Let's set up some tours. I don't know who that guy was from the OCIA, never seen the guy in my life.
Mr. Durbin?
But I can assure you that I'm involved in this every single solitary day. The legislative hearings that happened last Monday.
Mr. Durbin, we're way over time. I'm sorry. I got to stop you there, but I think you've made your point.
And again, I would urge you to consider pushing this back further for more discussion. Thank you.
All right. Emily Lays Ellison?
Hi. I've never spoken public before, and I'm just a regular person, but I do-
Can you pull that microphone closer to your mouth? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So I currently hold four different marijuana licenses, and I don't have a fancy speech prepared. But if ordinances take place, a lot of my businesses, actually, almost all of them, will be forced to close. And right now, this year, I pay over about $250,000 in taxes to the city of Oklahoma City. And I'm just one small person, so if I'm paying that, these other businesses are paying a lot more than me. And like Ron said, I just feel like we need more time to discuss with people of the industry of what we can all do to work together. And if anybody would like to tour any of my facilities, or like Ron said, anything like that, I'm open. I just wanted you guys to know that if this does pass, I won't be able to pay that much in tax money, and my businesses won't be able to stay open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teresa Gross-Nicholas? If everybody would state their name and address when they come to the microphone. Sometimes I forget to mention them.
Hi, I'm Teresa Gross-Nicholas, 409 Southwest Second, and I am a cannabis cultivation, I have a cannabis cultivation business, T3 cannivation and crop science. I've been licensed since 2018, so I've been through all the legislative changes. I've been to all the meetings. I understand all the laws and how they conflict with a lot of things within the city. You know, I'm not going to give too much opinion about what's up there because I think it's been said that there's a lot of things and a lot of changes that could be made to this. We hope that we at least wait, like Ron said, this session, we're looking at a lot of changes that could conflict with what you're trying to pass. A lot of overreach on a lot of city governments that we've gone up against in these same meetings trying to fight the overregulation because of the stigma. So we hope that the regulations that you make is to benefit the city and not to polarize us or to continue to judge us for the type of business we are, because we are bringing a lot of tax dollars to the city, to the state in general. And we feel that we are owed a certain level of respect when it comes to making any regulations that affect us as businesses. So with that said, I just hope that you guys delay it a little bit further, wait until after sessions, and give us the opportunity to tour our facilities and learn about the industry in general. Thanks, guys.
Courtney Young?
My name is Courtney Young, and my address is 705 Mabel Frye. I do not own a business in Oklahoma City, but I'm a dispensary owner in Yukon, considering looking at opening a business in Oklahoma City. And I agree with what has been said before. I would really appreciate if you guys would push this back even further to get the opportunity to come out and to get involved and to see one-on-one what happens in our stores and in the processing businesses and in the grows. So pushing this back, like everyone has said, even further would be much appreciated by the business owners in the industry. Thank you.
Thank you. John Coombes?
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Mayor Holt, Mr. Freeman, I appreciate the time. James Griner gave you guys a big present for Christmas as he is exiting. I don't think it's fair that all of us have been here since 8:30. This guy comes in late. Soon as you guys pushed it forward to February, he jetted out like a rocket fuel. I own JKJ Processing in Oklahoma City, and I am overregulated. But what I want everybody to know is to pay attention, to pay attention and educate yourselves on medical marijuana. I implore every single one of you to come to my facility and tour it and see what we do. I appreciate you guys. I know you guys have a hard job, but I appreciate you. I hope that you pass it further on down the line, like Mr. Durbin said. And I hope somebody reaches out to me to come look at our facility and to get educated on this program. With that being said, hope you guys all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you. Adriana Laws?
I'm Adriana Laws. My address is 4019 West Hill Street. I've got a lot of questions, but my first is, you Republicans hate regulations everywhere except where they don't belong and only do further harm towards our taxpayers, don't you? How can you tell me I can only smoke inside of a well-ventilated building? Do you tell diabetics they can only take their insulin in certain places? Blood pressure medicine, anxiety, depression, or epilepsy medicines? Is that what you tell those people? You want to prohibit drive-throughs during a pandemic? We have medical marijuana patients that are high-risk for COVID, and they deserve to utilize pharmacies the way we would a Walgreens or a CVS. Why would you want to space out dispensaries so that people have less access to taking care of their medicinal needs? I don't care if there are 10 dispensaries on my block. Patients deserve to have access, and these small businesses deserve to be able to operate without being bullied or bulldozed out of their spaces, community, and the income that provides them the means of survival. How many people do you think there are that care about having a grow operation around their residential area? It's probably not many, considering over 10% of Oklahoma's population has medical marijuana licenses, over 10% of our citizens, and that number grows every day. Would you impose these restrictions on big pharma companies, pharmacies like Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and even small businesses like Lassiter's? When you put harsh restrictions on our legal medicine, you force the community to take action and acquire their medicine by way of the black market. You are further endangering people in our communities by forcing the illegal selling use of medical marijuana to be prohibited throughout our, to be perpetrated, perpetuated, I'm sorry, throughout our communities. You endanger patients by forcing them to have, to acquire medicine that is not properly tested, stored, or regulated? I can assure you, these regulations you seek to impose will only have negative results for everyone involved. Not only do you need to leave our medical marijuana laws alone, you need to take a step further and decriminalize all drugs because drug addicts aren't criminals, they're patients. Drug dealers aren't criminals. More often than not, they're people whose very existence has been criminalized by our criminal injustice system, and therefore they are poor. They have to resort to these means to make money to provide for themselves and their families. Take a lesson from the great state of Colorado and many other countries around the globe, and stop criminalizing people you should be helping. Now, I don't have, I don't know Mr. John Coombes very well, but I have had, I've had experiences with his processing company, and I can tell you that the people that work for him, because I've met some of them at an event a couple months ago, are very great people. They want to help the public. They want to be able to make money. They want to be able to make sure that people's medicinal needs are met. And the fact that you want to disrupt small businesses like this one is absolutely disgusting.
Emily Blunt?
I'm Emily Blunt, 2121 Cashin Place. I'm going to be speaking as a patient. The story's going to be really personal and hopefully give you something to think about in the time between now and when this comes to you again. The only thing lucky about being diagnosed with breast cancer in 2018 for me is the fact that the state had legalized medical marijuana. I endured 17 rounds of chemotherapy. I had to have my gallbladder removed. I had to have my ovary- I had to have my ovary removed. I had a double mastectomy with deplacary reconstruction. I have scars from here to here and all over here. And personally, I want you all to understand how ableist this ordinance sounds. You're trying to put restrictions on where I can go to get my medication that I need to deal with the anxiety from having cancer at 27 years old. The medication that I need, I needed to come off of anxiety medications that were causing me to have, let's say manic episodes. Due to medical marijuana, I'm not forced to take another pill. The last thing you want after 17 rounds of chemotherapy is to take another, can't really say what I would like to say, but another pill. Okay? So I want you to think about me. I'm 29 years old and you're going to be depriving me, think of cancer patients. When I was in chemo, when I had to use a walker to walk around and I had drains coming out of my body, drive-through would have been a very nice service. If you're not going to put the regulation on CVS or Walgreens, then it shouldn't be put on a medical marijuana dispensary. This is my medicine that I need to function in this society. And regulating that, you're just stigmatizing something that helps people. I can't help but think of my mother. While my mother was in the hospital passing from COVID-19, she was terrified. And I just wished that medical marijuana wasn't so stigmatized that I couldn't just bring her a freaking edible or something. You know? If my mom hadn't felt the stigmatization from medical marijuana from her 26 years of working at the Department of Corrections, maybe she wouldn't have suffered every day of her freaking life from rheumatoid arthritis, bone-on-bone joints, anxiety, depression. Don't do this to people. We deserve better. And also shame on anyone who voted against anything having to do with informing the people about wearing masks because of people like you. My mother is dead. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharice Baker. My address is 4321 Meadow Park Drive. I initially didn't plan on speaking about this. I was going to speak about something else, but I wanted to, I was really surprised at everybody that came and spoke because they spoke on everything that is right. I do have family and also friends that are involved in the cannabis industry as far as growing and having dispensaries, and this would affect them. However, somebody spoke on the stigma of medical marijuana period, and I wanted to incorporate the history of that stigma. And that history comes from after the Mexican Revolutionary in America. We tried to control the customs of the cultures of the people that were here. And with that, our federal government used marijuana, Nixon, with that being said, to put it as a controlled substance one, a dangerous substance, regardless of the Schaefer Commission that said it is not, should not be scheduled as, should not be a Schedule I substance. He put it that way anyways. And in doing so, you guys, it got overturned and you put it under the Controlled Dangerous Substance Act. And in doing that, you were able to monopolize on these inner urban communities who, cultures who are used to using this herb as a form of relaxation and meditation. And you were, you basically incarcerated them for it. So now that it is something that you guys have legalized because it is a way for you to make money, you are overtaxing and abusing your authority once more in trying to control the narrative in a way and push it that this is still a dangerous substance, but because society wants it, you guys are going to allow it. And that is not okay. It is not okay to have the stigma of an herb that is grown from this earth put into the ideology that is more dangerous than methamphetamines. So I, I hope that you guys come together and understand that this type of behavior is also rooted in racism and this type of ideology that you guys push now not only affects the people of color, but unfortunately now affects you guys. And this is what we say when we say white silence is violence because we're out here fighting for our rights, but in our rights is your rights. And because of desegregation, you guys are now clumped in the same category as what we have always been clumped in. And now you get to see the repercussions of how their, their behavior has affected us for hundreds of years. And this is why it is so important that we have more people that are not just people of color that support the, when we are asking that more regulations, more things are handled when it comes to our police, our government, our laws, our officials, because they are not just here targeting us. They will target you too. Like this young, like this woman says, she has four businesses and if they do this, they're going to close. I know people that have put over a hundred, over hundreds of thousands of dollars into this industry. And when you guys turn around and change rules and regulations, it causes them to come out of more money. So I am asking you guys, before you continue to make these laws and change these provisions, that you go and you speak to the people of the industry and you get it right.
All right. Thank you. Sincere Terry.
I'm here.
Okay. All right. That concludes the people who signed up to speak on item 11C, which means we are done with items from council, other than going around the horseshoe, of course.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't know if this is to the city manager and/or the people who spoke on this particular item, but is there any way that we can have the contact information of the people who, especially particularly from the industry, right? So that today, those folk can connect, we can start that process of connecting them with whatever working group comes out of this? Is that, I don't know what that looks like.
Right. And I know that some, some have reached out to council members already, and so we have information there too that they can get.
Thank you. So yeah, just make sure that y'all are, I think I got an email from you already, but just make sure that you all are having that connection. Thank you, Mayor.
Why don't we just stay with you?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I have one other thing. Can I ask?
Oh, sure.
Just on this topic. And I know, so I see this as a land use discussion because it's about our, it's about our zoning code. But I know that it's arisen because of opposition to rezoning cases that, you know, that come before us. And, and when I'm reading the memo, you know, I see that, you know, several of these requests were met in opposition from surrounding property owners citing concerns about increased traffic, crime and noise, odors, decreases in property values. And that, to me, that's like where that stigma piece comes from. And, and I'm just curious, I don't know if staff can maybe put together some information or I just, I don't know what our bandwidth is, but to maybe look back at some of the zoning cases that have passed and sort of get reports on those issues that other residents had brought forward as concerns. Because I'm, I mean, I'm inclined to guess that it's probably a lot of those things have not necessarily come true, but I think having as much data as possible about those concerns would help us in making informed decisions as we consult with the industry as well as, I would hope that the data would show us that some of that stigma is quite unfounded. So I'd be curious if we can help.
Yeah, so I would say too, you know, like a lot of times we'll get petition letters will come in. So you get those letters, you have definite documentation of what their complaint is. Sometimes you don't have all the residents stand up and speak to a specific incident, but we can look back with our records to see on incidents like that, what information we might have that we could pull together. So I'll get with you on that.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? If not, we'll.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quickly, Mayor, that I do need to go, I guess, tour some facilities. And I know a couple of y'all were kind enough to ask that I do that. So if you're someone that's really interested in that, then just send an email to ward4@okc.gov and I'll try to pick a couple out and, and we'll go from there. So, thank you.
And if I may, I know this has also been a hot topic for the ward that I serve because there's so much rural area of where I serve. So it has been a concern for me. And other reason that's been a concern for me is because we still have an unsolved murder that happened because of a dispensary in our community. So I'm, while I, I am very cognizant of the concerns as far as the industry, I also have to protect the people that are in the community when it comes to these types of incidents, not to say they're related at all, but again, the fact that we have Elijah Mothershed, Carnisha Powell, Rashana Stevens, Frederick O'Keane, those are four names that I can tell you have been directly impacted by dispensaries in our community that were, one, two of those were owners of dispensaries that were barely a thousand feet apart and both of those owners were murdered. And when, the one with Elijah Mothershed, obviously some of us who, who know or may not know, and that happened in January of 2019, I had just been elected in November of 18. So those are very near and dear to me in concern of, of how, how we can do better with caring for not only the industry folks, but our community, because there has to be some types of protections for both. And a 15-year-old being murdered because she's in the household because of some of the regulations or lack thereof is, is a concern for me. And that should be a concern for all of us when we're looking at, at how we're looking at, at how to move forward in these things. So while I am, I'm comfortable with us delaying and deferring and researching some more, I know this also speaks to equity. And I hope everyone realizes and recognizes the folks who did speak in relation to ownership or growing or processing, they don't look like the people I serve. And I mean, no disrespect in that, but we have to make all voices, I'm just saying, we have to, equity, have all voices at the table to ensure that we're having these conversations. So it's no disrespect to that. As I said, obviously we do need to do some more work. So that's what I said. That's what that means. We need more work. It needs more work as far as the diversity, equity, and inclusion of even the industry for our communities that we serve in reference to how, how we regulate and move forward. That is what I'm saying. I don't understand what's confusing about that, but it is, it's very important that we continue those topics. And clearly, some of the people that should have been at the table today, they didn't get the notice, so, or else they would have been here too, to express their concern. So, I mean, I'm not going to stop speaking out about those types of things or those concerns, especially for the, for my communities. And there are folks that, that don't look like me that have dispensaries, but we're, we're having to look at this in, in different ways. So I hope as the industry asks us to, to look at their side, I hope they also consider some of our neighbors that have been impacted by some of, some of the operations and grows and processing as well, so we can all work together in this effort. Because there, there is going to have to be some work done as we move forward in this, and I'll leave it at that.
Nothing else on that topic. We're going to move on to our general comments from council to those who are here specifically for the item 11C. We're now done with that item and obviously it will be deferred till February. So you're welcome to stay, but you're also free to go. Councilman Cooper?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So just to segue from that previous discussion, one of the things I'm going to be interested in when it comes to the medical marijuana industry and to my Ward Two constituent, I would really encourage you when you're having these conversations with whatever city entities are going to be moving us forward on this, to Councilwoman Nice's point, one of my questions remains, and this is really something after dealing with a couple of these zoning cases for growth facilities, specifically growth facilities even more than dispensaries, but how do we protect the business owner from unsavory people who are still a holdover from that black market? How do we protect them from people trying to do harm to you as a human and to the product? That's still a concern. That is, that is a major concern for me. Because the more endangered that individual and their business and their product, the more danger they face. Now, only do they face danger, but the neighbors around that facility do too. And so there has to be a conversation about what security looks like. And so I would really encourage you, and I'll do the, you know, tours also, but I would really encourage you, just because you're my Ward Two constituent, I would really encourage you to walk staff and folk through what, what steps don't reek of overregulation, but truly and honestly protection of that product, your lives, and the lives of the people around you. That would be my ask as councilperson, because the loss of life, as Councilwoman Nice is talking about, we cannot let that happen just to say we don't want to be overregulated. So that's like, and honestly, of everything that was in that item, that's the one that has my biggest attention is the security aspect. So that would be my ask. You're going to know it better than I do, but I'm sure we can learn together. To council and staff, something I wanted to say regarding my vote with the 21CP contract, I really want to make something very, very clear. I voted the way I did on that, again, not because I do not believe in my resolution. I believe so strongly in my resolution, I am willing to die on the hill of it, because we must move this city forward with the sort of items, the initiatives that are in there. I believe it. My no vote, and this is more for people who weren't on that selection committee, are either the selection committee, the law enforcement group, or the working group, was that the five people who said no to that particular consultant between the final two, and you can all go watch the city, if you go to the City of OKC's YouTube page and look up the Law Enforcement Task Force, you'll see in that most recent meeting, this debate. And you need to see it in a transparent way, what the debate was between the seven yeses and the five noes. And the five noes were, as I said earlier, they were concerned that the consultant we've ultimately chosen, that they didn't seem to prioritize as much that community outreach part of it. But it's important for the community to hear, both on that video and for me today, that they also still felt that this consultant was capable technically of doing the work. This was not a question of could they do it? It was a question of they thought the other entity was the better choice. And they walked, all five of the no votes walked us through why. And so that's ultimately why I voted the way that I did. And I just think that's very important because I, especially to Assistant City Manager Kenny Sudal, I, it's important for me to communicate to him, I'm very proud of the work he has done coordinating between the community, the Law Enforcement Task Force, the working group. It's very, very important to me that I communicate that, because we still have at least six months worth of work ahead of us on just that working group resolution alone. And this, this is going to call for us to have a level of trust with one another. So it's very important I communicate why I voted no on that, why the people who also voted no on that selection committee voted no. And I would encourage everyone to go back and look at that City of OKC YouTube page, that law enforcement group, and watch, watch that two-hour meeting and hear, hear for yourself what, hear for yourself and hear why it was important that we included in our contract the selection committee, the oversight committee, the oversight committee to make sure that these folk are doing that community outreach. So I really applaud those five no votes. folk are doing that community outreach. So I really applaud those five no votes for not just getting up, leaving, but saying, okay, here's how we can strengthen this process. I'm very proud of them for that. So, just wanted to make sure that I was communicating that to everybody. Another group that I started thinking about, just kind of listening to the comments I heard today, that I would encourage us to consider in terms of the community outreach, and I kind of feel dumb for never saying this, but while I was up here, I did a quick Google search of the American Psychology Association and the words "police." And I think we should reach out to the, we should ask the consultant, both in terms of the Law Enforcement Task Force dealing with de-escalation and the Citizens' Advisory Board, but then also the community resolution with those six initiatives, and probably more with the initiatives. I think we should reach out to psychologists in the metro area, specifically at universities, but not limited to, and maybe talk with folk in our planning department who have a better understanding of who those groups could be. I know Councilwoman Hammond with her work with the Mental Health Association. But the reason why that is so heavy on my mind, something I learned during my media violence research, so like, the entity, the Motion Picture Association of America, its predecessor in 1934, the Production Code, when they started making the regulations, it's kind of actually to the industry folk from medical marijuana, you'll totally relate to this. When they started putting in place the guidelines about what a movie could show, what could go into the script before it was made, not once did they invite to the table someone who was a psychologist. They invited folk from the church. In fact, it was literally crafted by a Catholic priest. But they did not talk to child psychologists about the effects of images and violence and language and nudity and those things on our brains. And they didn't do it with the Production Code in '34. They did not do it with the Motion Picture Association of America's creation in the '60s. So I think, I see this as an opportunity for us to not follow down that same path and try and include people who come from the mental health profession, especially since they are, in fact, in one of their most recent journal articles, making recommendations about what policing, I mean, yeah, when you did that, it made me start doing my own research. And lo and behold, guess what? Many of their recommendations in their article are in that resolution. They're in there. They are in there. They are in there. And that's got to be encouraging. It's got to be encouraging. So that's just something, yeah, that would be a group that I would maybe add for us to consider would be, what is the mental health, and especially at the university level, what does their input look like? I would also maybe recommend criminologists as well. There's a PBS NewsHour segment that came on last night about the rate of increase in murders this year. And in that same conversation, there were interviews with mental health providers, criminologists, et cetera, talking about how all this works together. And so I would imagine, I remember taking an undergrad class at OU in criminology. And so I would imagine that having those folk at the table at the same time that we have folks who have been disproportionately affected by some not-so-pleasant moments with law enforcement historically, I think that might get us to some better places. So that's something I would want to add to that conversation. I also just, I wanted to say, I recognize that sometimes on certain issues, this council finds itself and its residents, the moments are contentious. And I would hope that, and this is maybe just from my teaching background, there are times where we get into some intense debates in my classrooms. There were times when I was a grad student, when there were only about the number of people on this horseshoe at that table. And there were times where we were just screaming mad at one another about some of the things we were discussing. But criticism should not be considered the end of the story. Criticism is how we grow and how we learn. And I just think that that is something that in my experience in the last 20 years as an adult, that I have often found lacking, is that when someone criticizes something, again, you all know my film background, the moment I say, yeah, I don't really like that movie, someone thinks I've just like, said I hate them. Like, there's like this equivalency there. And I'm like, well, no, here's what I like, but here's what I don't think works about this film. And I think nuance is so lacking, and I would just encourage us as a council, especially as we go into these next six months, that are going to be some heavy lifting, that we are ready to hear criticisms from each other, from residents, but also be prepared to have a growth mindset going forward. I just think that's just going to be critical to us working together and having healing, productive, restorative moments ahead. I think a final thing for me right now is, I would encourage everybody, again, because of my film background, I am a member of Oklahoma Film Critics Circle, and we're in award season right now, where we're watching movies that they want us to consider for our organization's Top 10 list, and Best Actor and Actress in Documentary. I would encourage everyone to watch on Netflix a movie called Crip Camp, if you have not already. It's about the history of the civil rights movement as it relates to people with disabilities. And I learned so much watching that documentary this weekend. Again, it's available on Netflix. I can't encourage enough the viewing of it, particularly because as Maps 4 becomes a reality for us, and Better Streets continues those investments in walkability and transit, watching that documentary really reminded me that the way we design a city, it speaks to who we think should live in that city. And sometimes, it's whether we intended it or not, it's kind of beside the point, but watching in that documentary archival footage of people in wheelchairs, you know, coming to a sidewalk where there's a curb and they can't get onto the sidewalk, or watching sidewalks just end in dirt or lines. As I said during Maps 4, I see that as a level of cruelty that I just, I can't get behind. And so I'd really encourage everyone to watch Crip Camp. I think, and not just watch it, but watch it and then walk around our city. Drive around our city. Move around the city however you can, if you have a disability. And see what happens, like, when there's a lack of sidewalk. Imagine what happens when someone with a disability encounters that. In my mind, we should be prioritizing those folk, because the better accessibility they have, the better for all of us. So that's something that's really weighing heavily on my mind this holiday season, is that the city is for all of us. And the way we design it speaks to that truth. And I would also just say thank you to city staff for the last year of navigating some just really, really not good moments, and helping me as a new councilperson navigate them with you. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 4.
I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Ward 5. Happy holidays. Ward 6?
Thank you. Yeah, I think in the spirit of wishing each other a Merry Christmas, I just, I was too frustrated at our last meeting to speak to this during our vote to appeal to the Supreme Court on our handhandling median safety ordinance. But in the last few weeks, as I've been observing Advent, it's just become more and more clear to me that, like, in what, three days, we are celebrating the birth of a child who was born under salacious circumstances, if you will. His mother and father had to flee violence by the state, cross borders as refugees. Then, he was raised in a poor family, spent time with the most poor and neglected people in that society, was maligned for that by religious and political leaders of that day. And then ultimately was executed by the state. And this sort of like whitewashing of Christmas, the celebration of this child, to me, really speaks to that median safety ordinance and the impact it has on some of the most vulnerable members of our community. And I know people talk about that it's like about safety, and it's about keeping people safe from being hit by a car on a median. And I'm a little frustrated because many of the people who have been saying that are not here at this moment. But, and to Councilperson Cooper's point, if we really were concerned about safety as a council and as a city, we would be making policy changes about how we design our streets. We wouldn't care about vehicle count. We would change the way that we decide how to design a street, whether, we would never put more bond money into widening a road. Because to me, what that ordinance communicates is not that we care about the safety of individuals, but we are wanting to control people who have less power in our society, people who are not inside a car, for the benefit of moving people with more power, people in vehicles as fast as possible through our city. And so, especially recognizing how many people die in our city by traffic violence and by not having proper infrastructure, and that those are the people who are most likely to be in lower socioeconomic statuses, to have various physical disabilities, to me, that is really telling about what we are actually prioritizing as a city. And I really wanted to say these things at our last meeting. And I was frustrated because of the situation, but I was also frustrated because I was incredibly disrespected in executive session, and it still has not been addressed. And, again, the piece about celebrating a person who looked at the world through a lens of the least of these and caring for them, I guess it's probably not a surprise to most people here that that is at the core of how I operate in the world. And so, I don't know where I'm going with that particular idea or thought, but I just felt like I needed to say all of this, because I was not in a space that I could say it two weeks ago. But I did want to say it in this space and in this forum, because I feel like it is important to recognize that we cannot speak out of both sides of our mouth by saying, yes, we want safety for residents who aren't in cars, but now we're going to spend a bunch of money on road widening, or we're going to stand in the way of making Classen Boulevard and other six-lane arterial roads through our city safer for people on bicycles, or on foot, or in a wheelchair, or pushing a stroller, because I want to be able to get from the far outreaches of the city to downtown or to some commercial district 10 minutes faster. And so as we, again, as we pursue those conversations about our streets and making them safer, I guess I welcome this council's support in those efforts because of our apparently explicit desire to protect the residents of our city by continuing to push this ordinance forward for the last five years. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ward 7.
Yes, that was a mic drop, so I don't really know what to say after that, other than, fully support Councilwoman and the things that she said, and her feelings of what happened a couple weeks ago in the executive session. But I will say this, and as we've been hearing, it made me think about, earlier, the ask from the audience, what does that mean, as far as me speaking to diversity and inclusion? I think that speaks to the privilege, and that's the unfortunate part of the conversations we have to continue to have, to ensure that all voices are heard. And I also, in thinking of that, thought about a young man who I believe is still in prison, or in jail anyway, LaRue Bratcher, based on changes that took place in the process of him being a part of the industry. And it's unfortunate that those types of voices get caught up continuously in the process, just as the voices that I've said, that we're still waiting, I believe Frederick O'Keane's, they have found who murdered him, but we're still waiting on three people as far as those killers to be brought to justice for my friend Elijah, and his friend and her daughter. So, you know, I don't think people, well, I'm not naive to any of it, while it is a very complicated industry. So there are some things we will have to continuously learn and go about. But again, I hope that we can all have a collective conversation on both sides to come to a middle for those things. I wanted to mention, I know we were talking about opening night, and it kind of came about as far as the young artists and the murals, but the Fresh Paint, that's what we heard. But I want to emphasize that this is the first time for us to showcase young voices of color in our murals for our city. And this is exciting, especially for the big events that opening night is, to showcase our young people in our community that may not have had or ever get this kind of platform for them to be showcased. So I want you to be on the lookout for Shakira Maynard, Verdine Thompson, Jesse K. Shelton, Jasmine Jones, and Anthony Brock. All of these young people will be showcased for opening night and Fresh Paint. And I am so excited to be able to just express the joy of seeing our young people highlighted on this kind of platform. So I can't continue to speak enough about that, and you can see it at Factory Obscure. I know they had to halt some of their work right now because of a couple of scares with COVID, but I know they'll be back to work when it's safe. And we will continue to support those young people in their efforts as well. And speaking of COVID, I know last couple weeks, it was, it's real heavy, and I appreciate that, that names were put in our resolution pertaining to our masks. But since then, we've had another person that I know that's near and dear, Ms. Deborah from Georgia's Happy Hop. And I know if you've ever had barbecue in Culbertson or in that area, you see that beautiful, joyful smile and bubbly personality when you walk in. And that's not going to be there any longer, because she lost her battle to COVID. And I understand that the restaurant had been closed a week while they were working to ensure that she would be safe and healthy and come out of this. And she didn't. So I think we all have to realize that this is getting closer and closer to home for those that didn't before, for those that did not before. And I know she's an extended family friend, so a personal story, when I told my mom, it was very shocking for her to understand, when I told her, because, again, the names are getting closer to people we actually know, have interacted with, have conversations with, and we have personal relationships with. So it's very difficult for us to be able to just consider, or not consider, just being safe for ourselves in those that we have yet to meet and be involved in a conversation with. So I would encourage us to continue to do the things that we have been asked to do. And I know another couple has asked, when are we going to be able to get these vaccines in our community? And I asked a physician that I know, and he said, probably March or April for our communities. So that means we got a long road to hoe as far as getting where we need to go with continuing to stay safe and the messaging. And this is very hard with the holiday season, because a lot of us think we may not see some of our family members now. we may not see some of our family members next year. So we want to do things and be be closer, but we still have to do that very safely and securely for our communities. I will say happy Kwanzaa because it is coming up on December 25th. And I think it's very timely for the theme. It's Kwanzaa and the well-being of the world, living and uplifting the seven principles. So I will let you know if you had not heard, it starts on on the 25th. So Umoja, unity, Kuji chagaliah, self-determination, Ujima, collective work and responsibility, Ujama, cooperative economics, Nia, purpose, Kumbh, creativity, and Imani, which is faith, all timely for 2020 going into 2021. So I hope we will all take heed and and support each other during this process of of COVID and during this process of Kwanzaa and actually celebrating and honoring a new year and new possibilities for 2021. So I've got just a couple more things and then I'll be done. I want to congratulate our city, especially our visitor's guide with the diversity that we have with OKC Black Eats, highlighting our black restaurants. And this is very exciting for our communities because this hadn't been done before either. So now we we have a directory of places that we can enjoy and support. I wanted to re come back to the Ebenezer Church incident that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, hey, I what I saw is what I saw. And then I did have a conversation with Major Butler. She called me and told me what happened. So and I appreciate the her for doing that. And I do understand the young man that I reported that I didn't know what happened to him. And I it appeared to me that he had been handcuffed and apparently he was not, but his hands were put behind his back in that type of motion. But he was taken to crisis intervention. And I appreciate our officer for doing that, giving him getting him that type of of help. And then the young man came back to the church that afternoon. And then he was also given the opportunity to be transported to Salvation Army. So there there was some resolve in some aspects as far as him seeking shelter and being able to to come. And then I understand the next day he came back and served at the church to to be a part of what was taking place. So thankful that we have places such as Ebenezer and the other many churches that we do not hear of as often that are doing the work in our communities to ensure we're all taking care of each other. So I did want to mention that because obviously I was very concerned about what was going on with this young man and just the incident in general. But I did receive some resolve as far as what took place and the after effects. And I think that's that's what's important. We don't have those types of conversations enough of what what we see compared to what happens and what takes place afterwards. So we need more of those. And that's that's why we're continuously advocating for the things that we're doing when it comes to law enforcement, when it comes to social justice, when it comes to criminal justice reform as far as policy is concerned. Because if we don't know what's going on, we're going to act as if these things are taking place. So it's it's important for us to continue that structure of having that exchange of information so we can work accordingly in the best advice for our communities. So the last thing I have obviously is want to thank One Church One Child. It is for foster and adoption for our communities. They allowed me to be a part of the event that they had Saturday as far as it was a lot of stuff going on Saturday on the east side. So thankful to all the churches that were giving away, I heard, I know they were giving away bikes, they were giving away food, they were giving away. We were giving away food, toys, and some hands to the community. But I understand there were just overall abundance of giveaways and different things, just blessings for the community. So we're grateful for that. And we want to continue those things and those efforts in our communities as well. So again, happy Kwanzaa. Oh, Oklahoma Film and TV Academy. So anyone over 18 at Green Pasture Studios, they do have an opportunity right now because of COVID for people for folks that are looking for new careers to get engaged in this process. So you can call 944-0600 and go to oklahomafilmandtvacademy.com. They have film crew and set ready. I went to visit last week and 26 people were graduating from the class and they were going to be put out in in the in the world of of film and TV and start at like $150 a day or more doing these types of careers. So if if you are listening and you are looking for something new and and exciting and something that can be you can be a part of, especially with the booming industry now that we're trying to grow for our city, this is the place to start. And we can't wait to hear about all of the Oklahomans that are making their impact in this industry when it comes to to film and TV. So I wanted to make sure I left that because we the time is ticking for us to get people engaged in that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And I know that Councilman Stonecypher is at River Trust.
The Councilman McIntyre is as well.
Oh, okay. Mr. City Manager, we're now at item 12, City Manager Reports.
Yes, so I have Doug Dowler, our Assistant Finance Director. He's going to give us a quick presentation on the developmental development impact impact fee adjustments. The state law or the ordinance that we passed on impact fees allows for an annual adjustment. And so Doug will just explain that to us. We just come forward to the council to announce that before we put it in place.
Yes, Doug Dowler, Assistant Finance Director, Budget Director. The the ordinance that was adopted in 2016 allowed the use of the construction cost index that's published in Engineering News Record as the source for these rate changes. The increase is about one and 1.49% right at one and a half percent from the prior year. So actually, for the parks and trails fee, it does not change because of rounding off to the cents. It doesn't change for the streets fee. It does go up by about a penny on each of the different categories of land use category there. And so that that is going into effect. This is just more for information rather than any action at this point. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. We have we also have a report on for council priorities on the enhanced recreational opportunities and community wellness. And Doug is here. Just he can answer questions or just give us a quick update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation for the record. We we think even with COVID and and everything else we had facing us this year, the responses that we got from the citizens were pretty good in our favor. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have as it relates to this the data that has been presented.
Any questions for Doug?
If we have any questions, follow it up. We'll make sure that we catch up with that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Doug. And then we have the sales tax report on. Didn't have a presentation on that. But I just wanted to mention it that, you know, we're still in a good position overall as far as where we're compared to our targets for the year. It's still down about 5.3% on the year, but December did see almost an 8% decline. Something we're going to have to really monitor close. Councilman Cooper asked about when we would have Russ Evans back to talk to us about the economy and what our sales tax projections are. And he's scheduled to be here for the budget workshop on February 9. And so he'll be speaking to that and give us information at that time. But something certainly, you know, in the first part of the year, we'd expected more decline in sales tax than what we've experienced. I think that we'll see lasting effects from COVID going into the second half of the year. And because of that, we'll probably lose some ground, at least on sales tax, as far as where we are compared to target. Right now with sales tax, it's about $7 million above target. And so it's in a good position. I still think we'll finish the year ahead of target. But I think we'll probably lose some ground on that as we go through the end of the year. And then on use tax, it's about 11% above target for the year. I mean, I'm sorry, it's about 11% growth for the year. So it's still doing really well as more and more people are using online type type shopping. And so overall, the revenues are really, really good right now. Sales and use tax combined is $10.6 million over target. And we'll continue to monitor that and make sure we report. And again, Russ will be with us at the budget workshop to give an update on the economic outlook. That's all that I have. Yes, sir. Remember, kind of. Yes, yes. So it was close. So I think we had first first half of the or the first quarter of the year. We had a decline of, I think it was around 11% decline in the first quarter. Do you remember, Doug? I mean, Brent? 11% decline. In the second quarter, it was 9% decline.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And then we were expecting only 2% decline next quarter. And I really think that's going to be hard to top. And then actually, I think being flat or maybe a little bit of growth in the final quarter. So that's we had spread those out based on the expectation that the significant impact of COVID being in the first half of the year, the federal assistance and the city's programs for assistance really helped to offset some of that impact. So it kind of smoothed out a little bit. We're expecting in the second half that probably where we have those targets will be a little bit above where they'll come in. We still had projected a 5% decline for the year. And right now, with the numbers we've seen working with Russell, we think that we'll probably be ahead of that. We'll do better than just a 5% decline. We'll have something less than a decline of 5% over the year.
That that reminds me, Mayor, thank you for your comments on the PBS NewsHour about, I saw that. Because I'm a NewsHour guy. I watch it every day, every day. But when you spoke specifically to the need for a congressional relief package that involves revenue relief for cities and state governments, I really appreciate you, was it Mayor Daley, was that?
Whaley, yes.
Whaley? Yeah, I just really appreciate the two of you making that that advocacy on the NewsHour. And just really, that that thank you for that. And hopefully this next round will actually address that because it's so important.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all that I have.
Okay. Well, that concludes item 12. That brings us to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. And we've had a few signed up. Adriana Laws.
Sorry, I was trying to have one of our community members sign up to speak. I stand here before you guys today as a 22-year-old activist and advocate, a full-time college student and a single mother, and an extremely concerned citizen. Craig Freeman, as the highest paid public official of the city, elected or not, you have a duty to act and protect the best interest of our taxpayers. Mayor Holt, as one of the most popular elected officials, until we get done with you, that is, it is your duty to act in and protect the best interest of our taxpayers. All seven of the city councillor or eight of the city councillors who sit up here have a duty to the people to vote and act in our best interest. Oklahoma City Police Department is a menace to society and only further perpetuates the crime and harm in the very community that they're supposed to serve and protect, yet all they do is hurt and neglect. You all have the collective power needed to make substantive equitable change for this community. We want effective policy changes. We want you to defund this police department. We want you to invest in the community and into diversion programs that keep our community members safe and protect them from the grips of these deadly predators as if they were the prey, as if we are the prey because that's what we are. Every time the police kill someone, the clock starts over and the time starts ticking down until the moment they do it again and again and again. These meetings we've been asking for, we want them to happen. We want meetings for and on behalf of the families and their interests. Meetings where you listen to the community activists and advocates who have weathered recently or over years have dedicated their lives to bettering and protecting our community. Meetings on behalf of those who have lost their lives and voices to the hands of Oklahoma City Police Department and their state sanctioned violence. Oklahoma City Police Department is second in the nation and our state as a whole is fourth with our two biggest cities, because Tulsa is seventh, being in the top 10 of most citizens killed at the hands of our police departments. We are the epitome of a racially biased and motivated system that was implemented after the abolishment of slavery, modeled after slave patrols whose only mission was to continue to rape black and brown people of their culture, freedom, humanity, and dying breaths. We can't breathe. Today, we are demanding because we're tired of asking nicely that you stop killing us and that you implement policies that make them stop killing us too. You have the choice to meet and listen to community leaders or watch your city burn because that's exactly what's happening. It will burn in flames fueled by oppression, fascism, systemic racism, and white supremacy. The time for reckoning is here, and it is time for you to atone for your sins, which are the silence, complicity, and perpetuation of harm that all of you have let be perpetuated by the malicious use of force, abuse of power, and disgusting behavior of Oklahoma City Police Department. Your time is up.
Christopher Johnston.
I hope that we can all collectively destroy this evil. In fact, cognitive research has shown that white folks generally see people of color, even if they are smaller than them, to be more threatening and larger in size. White supremacy has held whites within a prison cell of ignorance. We we ask that you be beholden to the people, not to the FOP. You got to think this is the organization that vehemently backed Daniel Holt's claw, who ravaged women in my community. And I ask for the people to not turn the other cheek. Do as Malcolm X said, when they turn your cheek, you turn theirs right back. We turn theirs back with legal. Legal means anything that can be done. We are, we don't, we're not going to wait for gatekeepers either. We're not going to have to run things through a certain committee, kiss certain rings, to have certain meetings with people. You should feel welcome to talk to us. We collectively can get this done. I'm I'm fearful. The reason why I'm fearful is that if things do not start changing, this is a state that allows everybody to walk around with a gun, willy-nilly anybody. And I'm afraid that people are going to start taking matters under their own hands. We've seen this time and time again throughout our history where people have risen up and they have hunted people down in our own country. And that is what will happen if we don't start doing something about this peacefully, legally, the right way that it's supposed to be done. So Revelations 22:11, he that is unjust, let him be unjust still. And he which is filthy, let him be filthy still. And that and he that is righteous, let him be righteous still. The time of the reckoning has happened. The people have spoken. We're not going away. We're going to make this very uncomfortable for everybody. I know that this is going to take time. There will be a lot of discomfort, but with growth, there is discomfort. But we have to tackle this. We can't wait for a more convenient season. We can't wait for certain people to, what book do I need to read? You can Google it. We need action and we need things to be done now. We need punishment. We need laws. We need things to be done now. I've been, I've traveled the world. And I have seen police in other countries, Thailand, the UK, take down armed people with weapons, a knife about that big, without using guns. It's called proper training. You don't have to use it. Now, I'm not saying that it doesn't, but it can be, there are things that can be done. Okay, I watched Benny, that video. Five officers step aside and put six in his back. They could have took him down. That man was maybe 130 pounds soaking wet. We're not going away. It's time you start doing your job.
Tim Harper? Tim Harper? Okay. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Harper stating your address.
123 Locust Grove Drive is my address. I was going to address James Cooper about you. You ask a question about security and dispensaries. And I I don't know, I'm not very familiar with dispensaries and grow operations. If if the owners and workers are allowed to carry a gun in those. If they are, then that's probably one step to them being able to provide protection for their own self while they're there. Because when you have a an attack on your person, you need to be able to defend yourself in seconds, and the police are only minutes away. So if that's not in state law, maybe we could work on getting that changed where the owners of dispensaries and and grow operations can carry. Because we we allow bar owners to do it. So why not this other business? Why do we cut them out of being able to defend themselves? Because that answer that was answered in 1791 with the Second Amendment. And let me see here. answered in 1791 with the Second Amendment. And let me see here. And the last gentleman just talked about anyone walking around carrying a gun willy-nilly in Oklahoma, that we allow just anyone to do it. That's not true. You have to be, you, you cannot be a prohibited person to carry a gun in Oklahoma with or without a license. You, you have, you can't have a felony conviction or be adjudicated mentally ill, or have a restraining order to be able to carry a gun in Oklahoma. So that's, that's a false statement. People that are going to go out and commit crimes with a gun are going to do it, whether they have, they can carry a gun or not. They're just going to do it. And there's no law you can pass to stop them from doing it. I served my community at the Gregg County, Texas and Oklahoma County Sheriff's Departments, the Juvenile Detention Center here in Oklahoma and with DOC, and other prisons over 18 years. And I have 18 years' experience in the Use of Force Continuum with CLEET and T-CLOSE, which is the Texas Commission for Law Enforcement and Education, Texas version of CLEET, and been trained in use of force. And I also earned the Award of Valor from the Oklahoma County Sheriff in 2004. And what I saw with Stavion Rodriguez, when, when I watched the, the video from KOCO is, he, he looked very confused. He looked as if he didn't know what to do, and I'm sure there were five or six officers yelling commands at him. Put your hands up. Put your hands behind your back. Lift your shirt. Get down on the ground. Put your hands up. And he was confused. He didn't know what to do. And maybe he had a hearing, not able to hear as properly as he should. When officers are in control of a situation, which they were, he had placed something on the ground, and this is why we need to have the body cams released, because if the police did do a good shoot because he had a weapon, we need to know that. Also, conversely, if, if, if that is the fact, it'll be on the news that at 6:00 PM. They're, they're going to release that, just as Jess Eddie said. They're going to let you know that we did good, and here's the evidence. Well, where's the video? Crickets. We're not, we're not seeing it. So there's something up there. And the body cams may show him putting the gun on the ground, putting his hands in the air, and then they shot him. Five officers with guns can't even take control of a 15-year-old kid? What, what's going on here? So, these are supposed to be trained officers, and I'm not seeing that. I watched a LAPD pull over five individuals with three officers, and they had one officer giving the commands to those people to do what they needed to do to, to, to conduct this felony stop, so that you don't have five people yelling at one person or one group of people with different commands.
Okay, Mr. Harper, you're over time. Is there any concluding statement you want to say?
Did you say time's up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess Eddie?
Want to point out to Mr. Harper that black people, when they arm themselves in, in their marijuana business and shoot people breaking into their business to defend themselves, get charged with murder in this county, because we got a racist district attorney and a racist police force. I need to hit a couple of things here. So obviously, we've shifted from all of our attention on Oklahoma County to you all, OKCPD, and you too particularly, which means I've submitted several open records requests, nearly 20. I just got back my first one last week with a clear breach of, of OOR law. I had to advise the clerk, the attorney, who had to get up to a supervisor to remedy that. It took me five days. So I know that your attorneys and your clerks don't know the law, which means that I know that regular citizens, unlike me, who don't know that law, are not getting records that they ask. So if I get another unlawful response, I'm going to sue you without any questions asked. I should have probably sued you on the last one. I don't need an attorney because I'm familiar enough with that law. I'll do it pro se. So please remedy that quickly. That's, government transparency is important. Secondly, we talk about the loss of, of the owner of the Happy Hog, all the COVID deaths. David Holt, look at the people when they're speaking to you. Otherwise, we're going to think of you just like Kevin Calvi, and you don't want to be in his boat. Remember, say, you, and you are just as responsible as Kevin Stitt and Donald Trump for every COVID death in this city. It's been disgusting that you won't exercise your political power, your popularity, because you're too afraid of damaging your pristine, perfect political image, because your ambition drives you. You don't care about people's lives. You don't care about the kids and the people, and the black people and brown people getting shot, and you don't care about anybody who died from COVID. You care about yourself, and I'm sick of it. Furthermore, you care more about the perpetuation of the institutions, particularly policing. What we haven't really talked about today, while I respect Mr. Cooper's intentional dialogue about create, intentional commitment to creating productive dialogue between disparate community members, to observing process, to the exacting benefits from process procedure and bureaucracy, it cannot overstate the facts of the matter. And the facts of the matter don't really require the process procedure and dialogue to be addressed, and that is, the culture of the Oklahoma City Police Department is rotten. Nationally, it's rotten. Forty percent of police officers nationally are convicted of a domestic violent, domestic violence charge. Convicted. We know that like one in eight charges get reported, let alone convicted. We have a particularly violent police department that attracts individuals with a proclivity for violence. And we have a chief of police now who has the same preference. Went on May 30th, instead of being able to discuss with the community leaders such as myself and others that were on the crown, actually trying to de-escalate, he showed complete disregard and disrespect for our efforts. He arrested us all and prompted a riot and caused violence. And he's going to continue to do that until you fire him. He has no ability to, to lead that department. He's completely incompetent, and I'm tired of any bureaucratic meanderings that have to obfuscate that truth. I'm sick of it. We're on your ass. Get it done. You think, you don't know escalation, but I'm telling you, this meeting, these few people, we will continue to come here. There will be more of us, and we will engage in civil disobedience, and we will have justice for those families, and we will have reform in this city.
Sincere, Terry? Don't say sincere. Mike Grab?
I was born in Oklahoma City and grew up here. I'm a disabled veteran suffering from extreme PTSD. I recently moved back to Oklahoma City for treatment at the VA. Despite only being back a few months, I've already had my own run-in with Oklahoma City PD. In crisis, I came out of my front door armed with a knife and was uncooperative with officers. I believe I'm only alive today because at the angle they were standing, they didn't see the knife, and I was able to slip it into my pocket. I don't want to be a hashtag. Benny Edwards shouldn't be a hashtag. Stavion Rodriguez, who followed officers' orders, shouldn't be a hashtag. Chief Wade Gorley lied to the council June 2nd of this year. At the meeting, data compiled by mappingpoliceviolence.org was discussed. That data showed that the Oklahoma City PD was the second most deadly police department to the public in the country. Chief Gorley lied, citing several specific complaints with articles used in the study. Thankfully, the site provides full details of each death, including the victim's name. The independent nonprofit, The Frontier, verified the data using the names of each. The only death that wasn't solely the OKCPD's fault was shared responsibility with the Highway Patrol. After the meeting, Councilwoman Hammond stated it sort of seems like it should be a high priority for him to show why he disputes that report, and I agree. If Chief Gorley looked into the report enough to have specific complaints about articles mentioned in the report, he would have surely seen that his department was properly credited with those killings. That means not only was Gorley lying to counsel when he spoke to you June 2nd, but he was knowingly lying. This is absolutely horrendous. When announcing Stavion Rodriguez's murder, the police department claimed he didn't follow officer directions. Thankfully, news cameras were there and show that this again is a lie from the Oklahoma City Police Department. He's clearly shown on video dropping the gun and complying with officers' directions. Craig Freeman, are these sorts of lies from senior city officials the kind of government you run? Counsel, Freeman should be put on notice that this is not how we do things in Oklahoma City, especially a job as critical as the chief of police. This council claims its number-one priority is to promote safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. A police force that murders the residents and visitors to the city at the second-highest rate in the nation is antithetical to that goal. Dr. Martin Luther King famously said in his other America speech that a riot is the language of the unheard. He added, "Social justice and progress are the absolute guarantors of riot prevention." Counsel, your people are raising their voice. Are you going to hear them, or are you going to once again delay justice?
Brian Pickering?
My name is Brian Pickering. I live on 422 Northwest 9th Street. You all should be aware that it's not very far from here. I'm a little over 34, four years old, and I've lived here just, just under 34 years. I grew up in Dell City, Midwest City, and then my dad lived on this side of town my whole life. And so I always like to joke about how I grew up on both sides at 35. And I can still take you to all the creeks I used to try to find turtles in. I can take you to the drainage ditches. We caught crawdads. I can show you where the parking lots we skated, parking garages. And then that love for walking transferred into rarely driving as an adult. And from my current house that I live in now, I have walked to Spencer. I have walked to the Midwest City. I have walked to Dell City. I have walked to Norman, and I've even walked to Tulsa. And one of my hardest walks was walking home from Edmund after Isaiah Lewis's murder, because I went up there to support that family. And it was the first time I had ever ordered Uber, was to get up there to make sure that I got up there in time, because sadly, I couldn't even find somebody to give me a ride to go help protest. And although my childlike love for wandering sustained itself into my adulthood, I did grow up. And when I grew up, I started to educate myself. And after educating myself, my love for Oklahoma kind of, kind of started to fade, because I learned about the history that I wasn't taught. And I learned about what the land run really was. And now I'm ashamed that I ran through that field, that Parkview Elementary, and put my stake in the ground. And now, I read a matter of black and white, and I learned about Ada Fisher, Ada Supple Fisher, and how she went from watching her house burned down, standing next to her mother in the Greenwood massacre, to leading a fucking, sorry, leading a case all the way to the Supreme Court to fight segregation and separate but equal, things that still exist in our communities today. You wonder why certain communities are the way they are. It's planned that way. It's property taxes. Property taxes that fund schools. Property taxes that fund things. This is why we don't have, this is why there's a food desert, still. And I'm not even reading, reading from my notes, because a lot of people have already said things that should be said. But this is the problem, is we are not learning from our history. And the biggest problem that I see with, and I'm not speaking to anybody directly, overall in our government and in our council, is you don't realize that you are living parts of history right now. And the actions that you're taking and the votes that you make ripple throughout our entire city, and they affect everybody, no matter what ward you're representing, and no matter how much your constituents love you. It is affecting all of us. And that's why we do not have justice for Benny. That's why we do not have justice for Isaiah Lewis. That's why we do not have justice for Stavion Rodriguez. That's why we do not have justice for Mahavish, Good Blanket, and so many others, Derek Scott. And so I implore you, I encourage you, and I know some of you, I know some of you personally, I encourage you to take the right steps and take the right actions to make effective change, because you are sitting in the most privileged position of any of us to effect actual policy change that we need to address issues, not in just my community, but everybody's community, your communities.
Brian, you're over time. Is there a concluding statement there?
Well, I just wish that we would be more concerned about replacing murderous cops than we are about replacing Thunder Players. And, and at worst, the best thing you can do is prolong progress. You will never prevent it.
Duron Wise?
This is my first city council meeting that I've ever attended, and to say that I'm disappointed would be an understatement. I'm really disgusted at this point. Only three city council members, six months ago even, voted not to approve the city, the, the budget for the city. At that point, I'm not even sure-
We can hear you with your mask on. Would you mind keeping it on? I apologize, but-
Still talking. So the fact that the police budget is 200-plus million dollars, and people like you, and you, Craig Freeman, which is also even worse, that a lot of people don't even know your role, and the fact that you have the ability within your role, city manager, to fire a person like Chief Gorley, we've been trying to meet with you all for months. So the fact that you were trying to tell us to tame down and tamper down our actions, when the small, small things that we're asking for, just meetings, are being ignored, it doesn't make any sense. So when you look at giving more money to the police department, when they already have a 200-plus million-dollar budget, when you look at things like going to the Supreme Court, these are waste attack pair monies. We don't need to do any of these things, but these are decisions that we are having now. So when you go out and clear out homeless camp, these are policy decisions that you people are making. You don't have to do any of these things. You're choosing to. All of this harm that's being perpetuated, it's people like you, Craig Freeman. So when you go home to your house, Mayor Holt, when you go home to your house on Hickory Stick Road in Oklahoma City, when you do these things, just know that people are watching, that we know where you live. Thank you.
Reason for the mask ordinance is for everybody's safety. Obviously, we know we have serious- You have the city to wear a mask. Teresa Delgado. Teresa Delgado. Teresa Delgado.
All right. My name is Teresa Delgado. I'm new here. I just want to address you, kind of like Jess Eddie addressed you, because after he asked you to go ahead and actually see us and hear us as we speak, you continue to look everywhere else but at the people who are speaking directly to you. So if you could, please. I want to start by saying-
I have a lot of work up here, guys. I'm sorry. I'm listening.
Okay.
You got a lot of tweeting to do?
So I'm, I'm very, very new here, and I'm fucking disgusted with everything that I've seen going on. Okay. Holt and Freeman, you guys are fucking cowards. I just want to let you know that, to your face. This is all bullshit. You guys have the power to deal with these killer cops, and you're not doing so. So what I'm going to need you to do is hold your damn selves accountable and hold your police accountable, and stop fucking killing children. Stop killing BIPOC. Stop killing the mentally ill. Get your people under control. And by the way, your whole task force thing, what is that going to do? Police are going to train, correct? So you're taking killer cops who are training other cops to kill more effectively. Is that what we're doing?
No.
Okay. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Reese Baker?
I wanted to come up here and speak as just someone who has been through what it's like to be traumatized from this police force. Before my son graduated high school, I used to have to reiterate to him that even though people that look like you welcomed him very closely because he wanted to be in politics, that at the end of the day, when he walked out of my house, he was still going to be a black man. It was very heartbreaking to watch my son get that realization when he got arrested. It completely destroyed everything that he thought about when it came to our political system and how our government worked. He used to tell me that I lived in the old times and that I needed to come into a new way of thinking. And I used to have to reiterate to him that it doesn't matter how much they tell you at that Capitol, or how much you walk around here paging for them, that at the end of the day, they're still going to just see you as a piece of trash. And that's exactly what you guys allowed to happen. And that's exactly what you guys allowed to happen the day that you issued terrorism charges on a group of citizens that were protesting about the unjust killings and excessive force being used in our community and outside of our community. I watched my fifteen-year-old at the time, who was fourteen, just lay down in his bed because he told me, "Mom, when I looked down, I had a, I had a scope on my chest." And I just wanted to lay down because I didn't know what else to do. My mother didn't know what to do when US Marshals showed up at her door, beating, or my door, beating on that door, looking for a hundred and ten pound young man who once got an award here at your own government, at the Capitol for a scholarship. I couldn't imagine how I had spent all this time trying to embed in my son all the right things that he needed to do, the way he needed to talk, the way he needed to walk, the way he needed to dress, the way he needed to present himself, so that way he would just be looked at as a human being in you guys' eyes. That didn't happen. David Prater still issued terrorism charges. We had bonds in the excessive, excessiveness of over a million dollars. My son's bond on his head was over two hundred and thou- $200,000. You tell me who in this community can afford that? And then at the end of it, it was all dropped down to a misdemeanor. When have you ever in the society, in society, ever heard of a case, somebody being charged with terrorism, and then it gets dropped down to a misdemeanor? You know what that showed me? That showed me a hundred years, almost a hundred years to the day for the Tulsa race riots, because that's what they got charged with. David Prater was so disrespectful that he charged him on that date. May 31st, 2020, was ninety-nine years to the day of the Tulsa race riots. And here it was, we had a new group of young people of color that are now being charged with excessive charges, brought down from ADA, brought down from your Chief Gorley, brought down from a system that didn't give two shits about him. We had to wa- I, as a mother, had to watch my son go without sleep while he got out here every day and still documented all, everything. He got lumped in as a protester when he was an independent journalist. None of his rights as an independent journalist got respected. He even had the own media call him a protester and compare him to the Soviet Union. I watched young people run and hide because they were scared, because they had never been in trouble before. And I watched the fear in their eyes as y'all sent fifteen to twenty US Marshals to hunt them down. And you look at us and tell us that we are supposed to send, spend more money on this police system that has been embedded in racism. Racism is not a person, it is a system that has been implemented. And it's a system that's been implemented by a neantial thought, neantial thought way of thinking, that you do not care about human beings, that we are left and, and color divides us. If you knew anything and had any type of intelligence, you would know that white skin is the absence of melanating in your body. So it is just a deficiency that you are lacking when you cannot produce color and pigmentation. It does not make you any different from me, or you, or you, or anybody else sitting off in here. But you classify us as something different. I could not believe that we are asking on an agenda for us to give twenty-four-hour health care, mental health care, to police officers suffering from PTSD, manic depression, when this gentleman just back here said that you can't even carry a gun in Oklahoma if you're deemed mentally ill. But we want to have police officers twenty-four-hour care mentally for police officers that have suffered from PTSD and have the ability to take my life, their life, and anybody else's life, that they seem fit. And if you know anything about PTSD, because I am in school for psychology and my degree is in holistic methods, because I believe in full restoration in mind, body, and soul, and not just locking somebody up in a room of cream colors and a tile floor and feeding them medication, because that is not mental health. It is disrespectful to continue to sit up here and say that you guys serve a community when everything you have done in this business that's supposed to serve the community has been for the business and not for the community. We are tired of being ran into the ground by businesses and corporations that do not look at us as anything other than just sheep, cattle, and something that they can dispose of. I hope you guys take the time to really look at the system that you guys are representing, because from this system, nothing has ever been changed at all. It's only gotten worse. You use the zoning, you use railroads to deplete the black communities and black towns in this, in this state, to bring it back to the central Oklahoma City. And you continue to do it by gentrification, and that has been going on for a long time. I just ask that you guys really take a look at yourself and what is it that you are trying to put out here? And what are you trying to change? And how can you change that if you can't change your own mindset? The DOJ has implicit bias training for everybody in their departments and also with the police stations to let them know that it is a type of training and conditioning that you guys have been born into. It is a bias that you don't even pay attention to. And then you sit up in our faces and tell us that our police department, that everything is going good here. Well, we're ranked forty-eighth in education, we're ranked forty-fifth in how we take care of our children, we're ranked forty-seventh in how we take care of our mental health, over thirty percent of our people of adults have and suffer from some mental health illness, over fifteen percent of our children suffer from mental health. And then you have situations like Stevion Rodriguez, where you have six people yelling commands at him. Would you be able to determine what you're supposed to do? Would you? I know all of us growing up, when your parents get to hollering at you, telling you something to do, you, you freeze. So here it is, I got six people in front of me with guns drawn on me, screaming and demanding that I do something. How well would you respond? And instead of you saying, "Let me go ahead and start providing resources to the families affected by this, let me start providing mental health resources to the community that's affected by this," you said, "Let me provide mental health resources for the police officers that inflict the trauma on the community." You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Michael Washington? Michael Washington? Megan Wiggins?
Hi. I just want to personally say hello to James Cooper, Nikki Nice, and JoBeth. I have a lot of friends, I have a lot of faith in you, so I believe you guys, with your platform of progressiveness, I'd hope you'd be transparent and also receiving to what we have to say today, because I know a lot of people would be disappointed if you didn't. All right. So I actually have an uncle who's schizophrenic, and he's homeless as well. And we lost contact with him years ago. A lot of people blamed us also for not being able to help him out, but given the resources from Oklahoma, we don't really have that much. I know the MHAOK is a thing, the Mental Health Association of Oklahoma. They're also lacking funding as well. I know they did a recent outcall after Benny's incident for new members, and they're hosting Zoom calls to gather advocacy for youth and mental health. So, you know, you're doing something here. You're making people passionate, that's for sure. That's nice to see. David Holt, you know, I've been in your office before. I'm friends with Linca. She's played in your office, and I've met you personally. I know that you're, you know, you like to come off as inclusive, and I really appreciate that, but, you know, when one day you're at the front of a rally and supporting people who are implementing protests, and the next day you're putting curfews randomly, and a lot of people went to jail with $230,000 bails. Where's the inclusiveness in that?
Right.
Where's your sovereignty in that? I work with a lot of mutual aid programs as well. I'm great friends with a lot of people you guys personally probably know. I do a lot of food sovereignty work. I work with people, I am currently working with Mutual Aid of Norman, and I'm putting down lists to help people that you guys have not funded. You do not want to fund low-income families with fresh food, apparently. We have a lot of laws regulating around fresh food for low-income families, and then we're shooting them. Both odds are against them at this point, and I'm included. And I'm a white person. I am proud to stand here, and I'm not scared, because I know I'm, I'm not going to get pulled over, and if I do, I have a white dad with a lot of money, and he's going to help me out. But if I was just a low-income person, I mean, being put, put in jail and standing up and protesting against you guys, that's fricking terrifying. I'm secure. So I can stand here and I can help voices that are scared otherwise, that never feel like they have a chance to stand up for themselves. But that's why I'm here today. I was here yesterday, I don't know where my timer is at, I don't know if it's even on. But I, even yesterday, I was at Thirty-Ninth and May, and I saw a group of police officers. There's a man on the side of the bridge who's about to fall off. I saw the police just standing around him. I, I wasn't going to ask about that. I mean, I know that takes time. I'm not going to interrogate them while they're doing secure work. I called the mental health crisis line, and they said that we don't have proper funding to send people out. All we do is we take care of them after the incident. I asked if there was a CIT officer, and no one responded. That's the people who take care of mental health crises, and none of them gave me transparency. I can't imagine the terrifying feelings that man had hanging off the bridge, more so even the people taking videos of their friend that, I don't even know if it's their friend, they looked less fortunate than me, I don't know. I know people who are less fortunate, they stick together, they band together, because that's what they have to do, because you guys will not listen to them. So I, I stood, I stood in a great distance, and I saw them aggravate the situation, instead of caring to this guy that was hanging off. As soon as these people, they saw they were taking videos, they pulled their attention to the people in the street. While there's a man hanging off a bridge? Your ego's going to get that big to go chase men down this? I have the whole thing on video, by the way, and as soon as I spoke out, and I said, "Hey, calm down," they dispersed. You can see it. I have it. I have the whole damn thing. I'm sorry. But again, James Cooper, David Holt, Nikki Nice, JoBeth, I want to believe that you're with us, and I, I have people that genuinely believe in you. Even though we feed us fun, you know, we're, we're struggling to find grants. It's hard to access money, but then you see you guys putting money towards corporations when you have family that can't even feed themselves. I'm working directly with these people, and I'm working directly with these organizations, these pantries, and these mutual aid projects that are happening from COVID, making us realize how unsustainable of a system we have. And this is real work as white people that we have to do to realize what colonization has done. Whenever the- Whenever you look at statistics, even from the World Atlas, which Yale uses for their research, by the way, they say Oklahoma is in the top three police, for police brutality. I can pull it up right now. So if you're smarter than Yale, why the frick are you in Oklahoma? That's all I want to know. Are you doing your research? I'm doing what I need to do for the people that are asking for favors from me that take a few minutes of time to get groceries from one location to another. I'm working with local farmers to get sustainable food sources to our community. We're trying to bridge gaps here, but that takes communication and transparency, which means police records need to be transparent with the community. We need to know, because two officers involved, you know Mayor Holt, two officers involved killed men before. That's confirmed. This needs to be taken care of. We are not stupid. We have psychology majors here. We have people that have been fighting for years toward the same thing that I'm late to the party for. They've done more work than me. I have a huge way to go, but what I want you to know is I'm fighting for the community. I believe that we can make this better, but we have to listen to each other, and we have to be transparent, and we have to stop giving the police force more money. I'm sorry, but there's other people that need it, including the mental health crisis of Integris. They would love to have some funding to send people out to intervene situations that I saw happen last night, and I still have on my phone.
Pam, here are six minutes, I got to cut you off, but-
Thank you.
-thank you so much. That concludes the sessions you signed up to seat, and that leaves us with only item fourteen, which is adjournment. We are adjourned.